Electronic means as such, council members may participate in person or by electronic means. For those participating by electronic means, please ensure your video is turned on and let the clerk know if you leave the meeting for the purposes of confirming quorum. If you lose connection during any portion of this public hearing, we will recess the meeting until the connection is restored. If council members lose connection during the voting process, staff will get you back online quickly while we suspend the voting process. This information has been circulated to you. Members of the public can view the proceedings via live stream and YouTube, which is tweeted out at Van City Clerk. Of course, as always, we acknowledge we're on the traditional and ceded territories of the Musquegon Squamish and Sleilotu people. Thank for their generosity to all who live on their lands, and it was a great pleasure to see Chief Wayne Sparrow today in chambers. Also want to take a moment to recognize all our city staff who are working around the clock to make this such a great place to live and even in times of difficulty. So thanks again, staff for all you do and thanks clerks for all you do because I know it's been a long day already. Clerks, can we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Stewart in the chair, councillor Carr.
Here.
Councillor De Genova.
Present.
Councillor Fry.
Here.
Councillor Swanson.
Here.
Councillor Hardwick.
Present.
Councillor Weeb.
Present.
Councillor Boyle.
Present.
Councillor Domino. Domino is not on the call yet, and councillor Bly.
I'm present.
Councillor Kirby Young.
Present.
You have core mayor Stewart.
Thanks very much. Before beginning, I have some things passed on that may participate by speaking in person, by phone, or by submitting written comments. Speakers have five minutes to make their comments and should limit them to the merits of the report being considered. Say whether they are in support or opposed and whether or not they are resident of Vancouver. Speaker should follow along on Twitter at Van City Clerk for updates and progress on the meeting. And if you want to make comments but don't want to call in or come in in person, you can submit them on our online web forum at vancouver.ca forward slash public dash hearing dash comments. That link is also on Twitter. Those speaking on behalf of persons or groups will have eight minutes to speak, but only if those represented are also present on the phone or in person. And they must not be speakers themselves. And we need folks are phoning in, they should confirm on the line that they are there and in a group. Speakers who are pre-registered with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight delay, so we'll help you through that. If you want to present something to us, we also have a longstanding commitment to and respect for all genders. So just a reminder, when addressing speakers and staff, council should avoid using gender honorifics and instead refer to the person by first and last name or title. Just a reminder that we're a quasi judicial body, which means that we're only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including applicant or technical advice from staff, but to save debate for after the close of the speakers list. After we close the speakers list, we may approve the application, use the application, or third choices, refer the application to staff for further consideration. And if we don't finish this work this evening, we will recess and reconvene on Tuesday, November 23rd at 6:00 PM. So the first item before us is a CD1 rezoning on 110 West Fourth Avenue. Anybody have a conflict on this one? If not, we're going to get the clerk to read the application on summary correspondence. Please go ahead, clerks.
There's an application by BIDAR Living to rezon 110 West Fourth Avenue from Industrial District to Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a nine-story industrial and office building, a height of 41 meters and a floor space ratio of seven, are proposed. The general manager planning, urban design and sustainability recommends approval, subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendations of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since we flew to the public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list, and we see the public comments. 13 pieces of correspondence and support and four pieces of correspondence and opposition, and this represents all correspondence received up to 4:24 PM today.
Thanks very much. Anybody who wants to speak to this item, it's 1-833-353-8610 code 83433, 83433 pound sign. That number's on the live feed and Twitter. We have Nicholas Danford from the rezoning centre here to present the application. There are 11 slides. Does everybody want to see their presentation? Or, sorry, I'll ask the other way.
I'm happy to move to wave, but if someone answers differently, I won't.
Right. Does anybody want to see the presentation? Just say yay. Okay.
Yay.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's the one yay. So we're going to go ahead with the presentation. And then following questions to council and staff and then to hear from the public. So go ahead. Nicholas Danforth.
Great. Thanks, Mayor Stewart. Good evening, council. As mentioned, I'm Nick Danforth, the rezoning planner, and this evening I'll be with you for the first couple of agenda items. So first, we have a proposal for a nine-story industrial and office building at 110 West Fourth Ave. Now, the approximately 30,000 square foot site is located on the southwest corner of West Fourth and Manitoba Street. The site is currently houses a single-story industrial building and is zoned I1, which is the industrial zone that generally allows for developments up to five stories and an FSR of three. The site is surrounded by other I1-zoned properties with developments that range from a single story to five. The site is located in the Mount Pleasant industrial area or the MPIA. This area is centrally located along the Broadway corridor and is included within the Broadway Plan Study area. The intent of the MPIA is to house employment generating industrial uses that seek to harvest a diverse economic base. So the site is right in the center of the MPIA. It's within a 10-minute walk of two rapid transit stations, along with one future station over at Main and Broadway. The site is just two short blocks north of Jonathan Rogers Park and is nearby a number of childcare facilities indicated with the blue dot on the screen. So as the site's located within the Broadway Plan Study area, council may remember a report that was provided back in March of this year for the consideration of a rezoning application at both this site as well as a neighboring property, which is up next on the agenda. At the meeting in March, council directed staff to consider rezoning applications as an exception to the Broadway Plan interim rezoning policy because of the expansion and type of industrial uses associated with the proposals. The future tenant of both buildings is Absellerah. Now, Absellerah is a company that researches and develops new therapeutic antibody drugs that would help in the fight of spread of diseases like COVID-19. Additionally, the proposed uses in the development do respond to the Metro Core Jobs and Economy Land Use Plan that seeks to strengthen primary production, research and distribution within the MPIA. This application responds to the demand of up to 5.2 million square feet of industrial space that has been identified in the most recent employment lands review in late 2020. The proposed is a nine-story, 135-foot in height industrial office building with an FSR of seven. Seventy percent of the floor area within the development is earmarked for industrial uses, and the remaining floor area would be office use, which in the case of the future tenant supports the industrial lab space. Finally, as part of the Restart Smart Vancouver initiative in response to COVID, 800 jobs are anticipated in in relation to a development of a building of this size and type. So a virtual open house was held in June of this year. Throughout the application process, we received 67 pieces of correspondence from the public. Some of those who did provide comments were generally supportive of the proposed uses within the building and the jobs that are expected to be generated from this type of facility, as well as supported the design of the building. Other folks were concerned about the overall height, density, and neighborhood fit of the building, as well as the impact of views from Jonathan Rogers Park. As far as public benefits are concerned, the project includes delivery of a cash CAC in the form of a set commercial linkage contribution of just over $1.2 million. This cash will be allocated towards childcare and/or affordable housing in and around the metro core area. This contribution teamed with the DCLs and public art fees associated with the site total a contribution of nearly $5 million in public benefits. So council staff do recommend approval of the proposed nine-story industrial and office building at 110 West Fourth, subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix B. The proposal meets the intent of the and contributes towards the industrial floor space goals of the Metro Core Jobs and Economy Land Use Plan. Staff and the applicant are available for questions. Thank you.
Thanks so much for that presentation. Just give me one second here. I struggle with my setup. Right. So now we're on to questions from council to staff. And we have councillor Swanson on the list. Councillor Swanson, up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Yeah, so this is a proposal that would more than double the floor space ratio. Values of the surrounding of the surrounding land values, is it going to push them up? And if not, why not?
Staff?
Sorry about that. I was just waiting for the mic. This is Nick Danforth, rezoning planner here. Thanks for the question, councillor Swanson. You cut out a little bit, but I think I got the gist of your question with regards to doubling of the density. So this this is a proposal that includes a significant amount of industrial space, particular industrial space that for the biotech industry, which is difficult to find within the city. And so it is responding to the need for that industrial space.
Okay, so what I'm worried, how many arts groups are in that neck of the woods? I'm worried about will there be an uplift in land values that will make the rents that these arts groups pay go up so that they won't be able to afford to stay there?
So there are no arts groups directly on the either of these, on this site. Was a single-story building that housed, I believe, A, B and Sound. There are a number of arts groups within the neighborhood. I have a list of about 20 or 30. Whether or not, so with regards to the rent increases, I mean, so this provides additional industrial space, which you know, as you create more space theoretically, then rents would then adjust to accommodate the additional industrial space and the prices would then be expected to decrease.
I didn't get that. You give somebody, you double the FSR and you expect the prices to decrease?
Right. So the project delivers a significant increase in the industrial floor space that helps alleviate some of the capacity shortfalls and the upward pressure on rents within the industrial area. And so, as I mentioned, this shortage is particularly relevant within the biotech lab space as such as specialized nature.
So if land values did increase as a result of this, would it be possible to use the public art contribution to support existing arts groups with their increased rents?
Thanks for the question. I'll pass the question with regards to the public benefits contribution over to my colleague, Matt Shilito in the Broadway Plan.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Matt Shilito, acting director for the Special Projects Office, responsible for the Broadway Plan. We're aware of council's motion from January of this year to explore allocating some of the commercial linkage fee from projects like this towards arts and culture in Mount Pleasant. And that's something that we're looking at actively as part of the Broadway Plan process and the preparation of the public benefit strategy. And we'll be bringing forward that public benefit strategy to council in May of next year for your consideration. And with that, any changes that we might recommend to the councils, to the city's CAC policy for rezonings. So yes, that would include the opportunity to expand the types of amenities that commercial linkages fees in this area are allocated to, to include arts and culture beyond affordable housing and childcare, which is the current amenities that they're allowed to be allocated to. So we feel that that would be the appropriate mechanism for delivering arts and culture facilities in the area rather than the public art contribution.
Okay, Matt, could you take a stab at explaining why the land values and rents of existing arts groups wouldn't go up if they're nearby this place with a doubled, more than doubled FSR?
I think that's probably a question best directed to my colleague, Chris Cliven, in our financing growth team. If I can ask Chris to respond to that.
We are actually at the five-minute mark, so I'm going to do councillor Weeb.
Yeah, my first question is to Chris Cliven, and I'm wondering if he can explain how this would affect the arts valuation with it doubling over the FSR.
Good evening, council. It's Chris Cliven, Planning and Development Services. We've been talking to our colleagues in ACCS. We know from some inventory mapping of arts and culture spaces in the Mount Pleasant area, there's they count 41 arts and cultural organizations occupying spaces in the Mount Pleasant area. That's in the broader Mount Pleasant area. This rezoning today we're talking about is in the employment area in the I1. Within the I1, there's 14 arts and cultural organizations operating within the I1 zoning. As mentioned by Mr. Danforth, this current application is not displacing any arts and cultural organizations directly. But there is recognition, there are other arts and cultural organizations within this area. With regards to the land value increase, we do have a carefully calibrated commercial linkage target that's in place for for commercial projects in this area. The intention of the commercial linkage target is to fund the public benefit strategy or needs in the area, but it's also to capture the increase in land value that's resulting from the rezoning and the additional land development rights that are being potentially given through this, through this rezoning application. So my answer to that would be that we are capturing the land, there is land value increase resulting from rezoning, but we're capturing it through the commercial linkage target.
I'm just, councillor Weeb, before you go to your next question, there's a slight glitch in my script, and so we could wait to hear from the applicant and their presentation, but it might be useful to see it now. And with that in mind, councillor Weeb and councillor Swanson, you'd have another round of questions just to make up for the glitch. So we'll move to the applicant. The applicants here, would you like to make a presentation or just answer questions from council?
Thank you, Mayor Stewart. I'd like to make a presentation. I'm going to start my video here.
Okay, let's do that. Very good, counsel.
Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to speak today on behalf of the rezoning application for 110 West Fourth Avenue. I would like to acknowledge that I'm joining you from the traditional ancestral and unceded territory of the Coast Salish peoples, the Squamish, Sleilotu and Musquegon nations. My name is Marie McCutcheon, and I'm VP Corporate Development at Absellerah, a Vancouver-based biotech company. In partnership with BD, we are developing 110 West Fourth Avenue as part of our planned state-of-the-art biotech campus in Vancouver. With this campus, we've committed to investing in Vancouver in the long term and creating an anchor company that will create hundreds of new jobs in science and technology, contribute to the economic recovery and future growth of our community, and empower medical breakthroughs that treat illness and save lives both here at home and around the world. In my brief remarks, I will speak to three topics. First, some background about Absellerah and why our work matters. Secondly, why the Mount Pleasant industrial area is an ideal location for us. And third, highlights of this 110 West Fourth Avenue project. To start with some background, Absellerah is a Vancouver-based company with a technology that finds antibodies that can be developed into medicines to prevent and treat disease. Founded in 2012 by five scientists at UBC, Absellerah now employs more than 350 people, and we were recently named the fifth fastest growing company in Canada. A third of our employees are under the age of 30 and 56% are women. When COVID-19 hit in 2020, we were prepared. We used our technology to discover the first antibody therapy authorized globally to treat COVID-19. An antibody therapy is different from a vaccine. It is typically administered as a treatment after someone becomes infected. This antibody, Banlinivimab, has been used alone and with other antibodies in more than 600,000 patients worldwide, preventing tens of thousands of hospitalizations and saving an estimated 11,000 lives. As recently as November 2nd, the US government ordered another 600,000 doses of Banlinivimab to address the fast-spreading Delta variant. COVID-19 will be an endemic disease, and Absellerah remains actively involved in developing next-generation therapies. It is critical that we have the space to continue this work. Our work against COVID-19 is just one example of more than 150 therapeutic programs we are enabling with our partners, including therapies to treat cancer, autoimmune conditions, pain and neurodegeneration, amongst others. This work is highly specialized and requires the creation of new lab space that currently does not exist in Vancouver. We considered a number of cities for our global headquarters. Despite not having the lab space we need, we chose Vancouver to build and grow the company. Biotech promises to be a transformative industry over the coming decades, with life-changing impacts on the lives of patients and a sustainable, fast-growing pillar. with life-changing impacts on the lives of patients and a sustainable, fast-growing pillar of the economy. We employ over 350 people today, and we've hired more than 200 people in the last year alone. We urgently require space to accommodate our growing teams and continue developing these lifesaving therapies. Vancouver has the potential now to be a thriving biotech hub. Absalera is positioned to play a leading role locally and globally, but without lab space, this work cannot and will not happen here in Vancouver. About industrial land, we are incredibly excited to bring forth a project that will align with the city's goals for employment intensification in Mount Pleasant and conform to the industrial zoning. Securing lab facilities is a major challenge for Absalera and a bottleneck for the entire life sciences ecosystem in Vancouver. Our biotech campus, including this project at 110 West Fourth, includes more than 200,000 square feet of industrial lab space, and it will accommodate the hundreds of new knowledge-based jobs that we are creating in the coming years. This will include scientists, engineers, software developers, and specialists in communications, human resources, finance, and other business areas. At Absalera, we have been growing our operations in the Mount Pleasant industrial area since 2018. This area is ideally suited for our needs with industrial zoning and a central location close to transit, research institutions, local businesses, and amenities. This vibrant central location is also crucial to attract and retain our talented employees. It's a priority to proceed with this project at 110 West Fourth to keep our teams and operations consolidated in buildings close to our current lab facilities at West Sixth and Yukon and Manitoba and Fifth. This development is also required to support our planned GMP manufacturing facility that we are building nearby and to which the federal government has committed $175 million for completion in 2024. I will just share an image of the building for my final comments. The building we are designing at 110 West Fourth in partnership with BD will be a purpose-built lab facility with 70% devoted to the lab facilities that are in such short supply in the city. The building has been intentionally designed with setbacks at ground level and a public plaza with a treeed sidewalk. Glazing, furniture, and landscaping is used to soften and animate the sidewalk space. This is not typical for an industrial building. The stepping towards Manitoba Street complements the design of the neighboring building of the campus and allows for sunlit terraces at the west side. These overlooking terraces act as social hubs for the campus. The thematic design includes a paneling facade that is inspired by a DNA barcoding motif. There are several sustainability and accessibility elements I am proud to highlight. The city's green building policy for rezonings is applicable to this project, and LEED Gold certification is required for this building type. We intend to use a blue-green roof to both increase the volume of water stored and control the amount of water released. Absalera's bike culture is strong, and so we've provided an exceptional end-of-trip room and overprovided on the bike stalls. We've also taken advantage of our proximity to public transit to reduce the parking to the minimum allowable. In addition, we will be seeking Rick Hansen Foundation accessibility certification for an accessible workplace. We've engaged a public art consultant, and we have put forward a proposal to the Public Art Committee of the city for review and discussion. The initial presentation was well received. In closing, I want to thank council for your time and ask for your support for this important project. As the co-owner and future tenant of this building, Absalera needs to move quickly to continue our development of critical lifesaving therapies. We are hopeful we can make this vision for expansion in Vancouver a reality. And finally, I would like to thank the planning and development staff who have been very helpful in considering this unique circumstance as it contributes to our immediate and long-term plans. Thank you.
Thanks so much for your presentation, council. So councillor Weeb, I've reset your clocks. You have a full five minutes. Councillor Swanson, if you want to be back on the queue to ask any questions to the applicant, please go ahead. Councillor Weeb, up to five minutes. Questions to staff or the applicant?
Yeah, my first question's to Marie, the applicant, and it's about the top floor. I love the idea of the blue-green roof. However, one of the key things about this area is the views from the hill, Jonathan Rogers. And I'm just wondering, that extra kind of cladding that's on that top floor, is there an ability to remove that, to have that green roof so that when you are looking from Jonathan Rogers? Because that last floor cuts off the top of some of the mound views when you look at some of the drawings in the report.
Thank you for your, your question, councillor. The, the, we have done view studies from the park. And I'm not sure if we have an image available to show you here. I can present from my screen an image from the park. And as I stand by here, what, what you'll see is that the current I-1 zoning along Seventh Avenue, which is the south side of Jonathan Rogers Park, is shown as the red dashed line. The building at 110 West Fourth Avenue is just visible on the right side of that image. And you'll see that if Seventh Avenue is built to the current zoning, the building will not be visible from, from the main part of the park.
Yeah, if, if you look at the staff report, it actually shows the view from the hillside, and your building directly blocks the mountain view from that view, so not this picture, but the one in the staff report. So that's the one I'm concerned about, because that's where people are sitting up there, getting that beautiful view. And that last bit of building kind of cuts off the framing of the mountains behind it. And so that's the one I'm talking about, not the one from the center of the park.
We've, we've designed, thank you for your question. I think we've intentionally designed the building so there, there is, the support equipment for all of the mechanical infrastructure to support a lab building is, is placed on the roof. We've added a screen around that to add to the aesthetic view, and then, of course, there's the blue-green roof that we referenced. So the building as designed is, is, the, the shape and the scope of the building is required for our planned operations and to support the lab function that we plan to put there.
Okay, I guess my question's to staff. Is there ability in the next phase, if, if this gets approved in the BP phase, to look at opportunities to look at transparency through the top level as part of the next phase if this gets passed today?
Councillor Weeb, thank you for the question. This is Kevin Span, senior development planner with Urban Design and Planning and Sustainability. Yeah, I mean, this is a really critical consideration at this site. We recognize that this park is a really important community asset to the residents and, and employees in this area. So we have included in our own consideration of this application and also directives in the conditions to require the applicant to continue to work to mitigate as much as possible impacts to views when viewed from the southeast corner of the park, looking to the northeast. There are opportunities through the development permit application to explore design development at the roof. And that is reflected in condition 1.3 in the conditions of approval. I would also like to note that, just to reiterate that, one of the reasons why staff is supportive of the screen as, as proposed is because of the concealing of mechanical equipment at the roof. But as I said, we can work, we can work with the applicant through the DP process to mitigate the impacts.
Okay, and on buildings that are important view corridors, are there, I know that the one on Great Northern Way, they do a great job in allowing light through the building. So do we look at sometimes opportunities to create views through buildings with the way that floorplan design or structural design allows for that?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, within, within the parameters set out by either existing regulation or the CD1, we have opportunities to do that through the DP application, and that, that's something that we would anticipate working with the applicant on. We're hearing from council, and, and we recognize that the views are an important thing, and we expect that to remain an important and central conversation we have with this applicant through the next stages of development.
Okay, one final question. Are we seeing a lot of blue, blue-green roofs? And do we recognize, how much water does a normal blue-green roof able to attend? I guess I'm at the five minutes?
Yeah, you're right, you're five, sorry.
All good, thanks.
We're going to move to councillor Hardwick for five.
Thank you very much. Marie, can you explain to me and, and, and others, what is the difference between industrial space as, as you are, are developing your proposed developer and office space? You look at it, it looks like an office building. What, what makes it different than an office building?
Thank you for your question, councillor Hardwick. The building, lab buildings are intentionally designed, and it's a specialized design required to host all the functions of a wet lab. So this includes a greater floor-to-ceiling height than you would traditionally have in an office building. There's increased need for ventilation equipment, for plumbing to support the, the various lab components, sinks, washing equipment, et cetera. Such a lab will typically have casework built into it rather than desks. And it, it needs to be able to handle the, the typical process which we are running in our research labs. And so there's a, a flow of materials and people, which is totally different from the way office buildings are designed.
Good answer. Thank you. So you said there would be about 350 people working in this space. Would they, they all be Absalera employees? Is, or is some of this space intended to be leased out to other tenants?
Thank, thank you for your question. At present, Absalera is 350 people. We envisage one day being a company of more than 1,000 people. This, this building will give us room to house our teams and room to grow. One of the big challenges of being a biotech company in Vancouver is you're always chasing the space problem and trying to figure out where to put those extra people that you want to bring on. And so without room to expand into, it's a challenging circumstance and quite disruptive to business planning. So our plan is to occupy the majority of the building and to have some extra space where we can bring new people into as we need for the coming decade.
Thank you for that. What would you say to the, the concern of gentrification? Of taking away property in this area? Because a, a change such as you're suggesting will, I think, without question, have an impact in the surrounding areas. So how do you respond to that industrial gentrification question?
Thank you, councillor. I think this is an important question to consider as a macro view of, of Vancouver. And how do we want to, to, to plan a city that can accommodate high-growth employment zones that will help drive a sustainable future economy? As well as balance that with all the other interests of a diverse city? So for, from Absalera's perspective, it is, industrial land is very difficult to find in the city. I know that has been a key priority of council to, to help maintain this land to accommodate industries which, such as, such as we are proposing. So for us, the, that needs to be the priority. We are hoping that through, through our proposal for an art contribution that will help connect these buildings into the neighborhood, that will complement the kind of public art you see around Mount Pleasant and with the murals and, and other street, street-based projects. This will help balance these interests that ultimately council needs to decide on.
Interesting. Quick question to staff. It noted that there would be 800 building jobs created as a result of this. Was that, did I get that right?
Hi councillor Hardwick, Nick Danforth, rezoning planner. Yeah, so those are construction jobs or jobs that would be related in some way to the development of this type of building.
Interesting. Thank you very much. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Let's see, we've got councillor Boyle next.
Thanks, Mayor. I actually had similar questions to staff about the possibilities around community development contributions or public art contributions to support existing arts and culture spaces and organizations in the neighborhood. So I, unless there's anything more, council should know on that front. I recognize questions around that topic have been asked already.
Okay, staff, anything to add on that? Or applicant? I don't hear anything, so.
No, nothing to, nothing to add at this, at this point, councillor Boyle.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thanks, councillor Swanson. You're on mute. Still on mute?
Sorry.
There you go.
I'm just pursuing my old line of question here because it's not clear in my brain that my question has been answered, which is, if this building, because of the increased FSR, increases property values of nearby arts facilities, how are we going to keep them from being priced out of the neighborhood? That's what I need to know. Can we use the commercial linkage contribution to subsidize their rent? Is there a, is there something that we can do? We know that arts facilities are being gentrified out of all kinds of places in the city, and I think it would be a good idea for it not to happen here.
Okay, we've had a couple of answers to that one, but maybe staff would like to summarize what we've heard today?
Certainly, Mayor. This is Theresa O'Donnell, the general manager. And let, let me take a stab at this and see if I can help. The Mount Pleasant area currently has no public benefits strategy, so we don't have a policy on which to base that kind of a levy today. However, that is being developed through the Broadway Plan, and it is something that staff is keenly aware of. It's been part of the Broadway Plan development. And I know Matt's on the line. He might be able to tell us about the development of that policy and when that plan would be coming forward to council. We won't be able to address it on this particular application, but certainly we will as the Broadway Plan moves forward. So Matt, could you provide any additional clarity for us on that?
Yes, certainly. And thank you, councillor, for the question. Just to sort of confirm what I was saying earlier that we are preparing a Broadway Plan public benefit strategy which will include this area. And in response to council's motion from January of this year, it will look specifically at commercial linkage fees and explore allocating them to more, a more, to arts and culture facilities in addition to affordable housing and childcare. And so we will present that public benefit strategy back to council in May with the plan and any amendments to the CAC policy for rezonings that would come with that. So yes, that would enable monies from rezonings such as this, if approved by council, to be directed towards arts and culture spaces and mitigate some of the impact on arts and culture in the area by providing new space for.
Could that be retroactive to this rezoning?
So yes, so the, the, this rezoning, if approved and enacted early in the new year, would, the, the commercial linkage fee would go into a reserve, which would then be held for allocation through the capital plan process. And if council were to approve the Broadway Plan public benefit strategy next May, then that, those monies still held in reserve could be allocated to arts and culture and other types of public benefits in Broadway.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thanks very much, councillor Carr. Five minutes.
Yep, I don't need that. Most of my questions have been asked, but I do have a question for the applicant. I'm quite curious about the people that you employ at the building and whether or not those people tend to be actually located as residents within Vancouver. My interest here is really seeing jobs close to where people live, so commuting time can be minimized or that other alternative transportation methods can be used that are better for our climate emergency.
Thank you for your question, councillor. Our, our employee base is diverse. We have a mixture of renters, we have homeowners, we have people who live and work and play in the city. We have other people who want to commute from further out. So being proximate to transit is very important for us. We, we know we have, on a summer's day, well over half of our people are biking or walking or taking transit to work. And, and so we recognize that this is part of our culture as a company. It fits very well into not only the community ethic in the city, but also this, the planning that you're talking about and the importance of having a meaningful strategy for, for minimizing some of those intensive climate activities. So we, we do see that our employees also have a mix of housing options. Some like to, to live close by in condo buildings, others are further away. So thank you.
I appreciate, I, yeah, I appreciate that answer. And as I say, my other questions have been asked, so thank you very much.
Thank you. That's it for questions, council. Now we're going to move to hear from the public. Number speakers are signed up to speak to this item. Let's see here. The first speaker is. The first speaker is, I'm sure I have it right, yes, Dermot Keller. Did I get your last name correct?
Can you hear me?
Yes, again. Please go ahead up to five minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, councillor and community members, for the opportunity to speak today on behalf of the rezoning of 110 West Court Avenue. My name's Dermot Keller. I'm the dean of medicine and vice president of health at UBC. Before I begin, I'd like to acknowledge that I'm on the traditional ancestral and unceded territory of the Musqueam, Squamish and Tsleil-Wauti peoples. So I'll tell you a little bit about me and my background. I'm a gastroenterologist and an immunologist. And prior to joining UBC, I was dean of medicine at Imperial College London and am currently dean of the new LKC School of Medicine at NTU Singapore, both at the same time. Before that, I was head of the School of Medicine at Trinity College Dublin. In the course of my training, I spent time at UC San Diego in the late 80s and also spent some time as a visiting scientist employed at Eli Lilly Research Laboratories in La Jolla, at a time when they had just bought Hybertech, which was one of the first pioneer biotech companies. But had the unique opportunity of seeing the impact of biotechnology as a contributor to the health and economic developments of San Diego from the very beginning. Dublin, I founded three companies, Absona, Dirac Labsite and Celix. And in London, I was a founder of MedCity, which is a company which works to enhance the environment for biotechnology in the city of London. That was in association with the Greater London Authority. One of the key things that attracted me here to BC and to UBC was the vibrant entrepreneurial culture, a feeling that we were on the brink of extraordinary things in the biotechnology space. And that was a view that was vindicated during the COVID pandemic, particularly, in particular by Abselleris. So I can say that at UBC, we're very proud of Abselleris. It's a world-class UBC spin-off company led by Dr Carl Hansen, an employer to many UBC health graduates and British Colombians. As Murray McCutcheon has said, Abselleris began at UBC in 2012 with only six employees. Now, this company, which has pioneered an antibody discovery platform, is one of the fastest-growing and most valuable biotech companies in Canada. They recently partnered with the pharmaceutical giant Eli Lilly and Company to develop an antibody treatment for COVID-19, developed by Abselleris, which has been used around the world. And they've recently completed the largest biotech IPO in Canadian history. This remarkable homegrown Vancouver-based biotech company is putting down its roots here in BC, and that is really important. It's a testament of the strength of Vancouver's life science sector, which is the fastest-growing in Canada. And so tonight, what Abselleris is asking us to help them formalize Vancouver as a home base of operations with a new campus in the Mount Pleasant industrial area. So why is this important? And I'll give you three reasons for your consideration. Firstly, it will send an important signal to other local Canadian and international biotech companies and investors that Vancouver is open for business, a great place to do business. I've seen from personal experience that many companies start locally, but as they grow and flourish, they tend to leave for the US or Europe in order to scale up. We can't let this happen and we can't let this continue to happen. And indeed, Abselleris is staking its claim to a position here in Vancouver. I've also seen firsthand, from my experience in San Diego, that growing local companies can have a ripple effect, with many more companies encouraged to form. And the creation of a real innovation ecosystem in BC would be an extraordinary consequence. Crucial to such growth is actually to have the ability to have wet lab space configured so that the center of research is embedded within the ecosystem. And the concepts that Dr McCutcheon has emphasized regarding the design of a facility are germane to this. Abselleris are excited to stay in BC and can effectively scale up with the plans they brought forward here tonight. And all of the socioeconomic benefits that come from Abselleris doing business in BC will remain right here, benefiting patients, the families and communities. Second point, this new campus will be a key enabler in accelerating scientific discoveries that will lead to new breakthroughs in treatments and cures for some of the world's most pressing health challenges. This world of scientific discovery is changing rapidly, and platforms like Abselleris, which is a global leader, have implications for multiple diseases and multiple indications. And a new biotech campus with state-of-the-art laboratories, wet lab laboratories, dry lab laboratories, equipments and spaces is critical to carry out this work. Thirdly, I would say that the socioeconomic benefits to the city more broadly will be tremendous.
Sorry, speaker. I'm just going to stop you. There you have your five-minute, but you have questions? You do have questions from councillor Dechinova? Please go ahead, councillor Dechinova, with questions.
Thanks very much. I'm wondering, you talked about the value of Abselleris, and I've heard council members ask questions about the value of protecting the arts. Agree with that to some extent, but how do you think we should measure or quantify the value of this space being there for Abselleris so that they can be a part of our city? And continue their work in Vancouver?
Yeah, I think this is critically important. I mean, I think what you will see is the creation of hundreds of direct and indirect jobs, attracting and retaining talent. It allows students with the opportunities to train and advance their careers. And it brings new energy and opportunity to the Mount Pleasant area. And I think if you look at the areas where biotechnology has flourished, the arts have also flourished there too. Just look at Seattle and San Francisco and San Diego, all big hubs of biotechnology and big areas in which the industry actually supports the arts. I think that's been quite a significant trend.
Thanks. And considering your experience and knowledge of the industry, I don't mean to put you on the spot, you don't have to answer this question, but do you think that this could actually attract other biotech or tech companies? Our decision tonight or our decision on this will be something that's considered and looked at if other biotech companies are considering relocating or locating themselves in Vancouver?
Well, you know, I would say Abselleris' technology is actually a beacon. And it's such a powerful technology platform. I think it's important to stress that. It's not just the work in developing a COVID drug, but it's the ability to very quickly move to develop antibodies to many different targets in cancer and also immune diseases. I have no doubt that there is, that there will be a ripple effect. I would say this type of innovation is infectious, and this will be an inspiration to, yeah, yeah.
Oh, no, my apologies. I didn't mean to cut you off. I only have a certain amount of time. My last question for you is, and I think you pretty much summed it up, but if there's anything else you have to say to it, you know, do you think that this will help to put Vancouver on the map for biotech?
Well, I think Abselleris already put Vancouver on the map for biotech, but.
I meant us, us approving this rezoning, and that's their home, so my apologies. I have to consider, I have to consider what's in front of me for the rezoning. I should have said that, but that's what I have to consider here. Sorry, go ahead.
Of course. No, no, absolutely. I think this is a fantastic location within the city. And I think it does put Vancouver on the map for biotech. And I think it does, it does really make a statement, I think, in terms of the fact that Vancouver is open for business in this space.
Thanks for your comments and your presentation, answering my question.
Thank you so much. We do have other questions for you. Councillor Hardwick, up to five minutes, please.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to pick up where you left off. You were about to talk about the socioeconomic implications.
Yeah. Well, what I can say is, you know, that's an economy based on biotechnology and health is quite, has quite powerful implications for the economy of the city and the province. And you know, the reality is that there will be both direct and indirect jobs associated with this type of a project. And also, as you look at this going forward, the, you know, developing new drugs is one part of the jigsaw. Other parts of the jigsaw include doing the clinical trials of those drugs within the ecosystem, being able to manufacture within the local, not necessarily specifically on that side, but within BC. And the ability to attract people into the city who are interested in biotechnology and who might themselves start their own companies. So I think there are really substantial implications, yeah.
Well, that's an interesting thing to think about. One of the things I like is that Abselleris is a homegrown innovation, not as opposed to what's been described as a silicon hyphenate, where we're just trying to attract American multinationals in, this is homegrown, which has merit. But also the notion that there can be entrepreneurial spinoffs from this innovation itself so that there might be opportunities for further economic diversification spun off of Abselleris. Do you think that that has potential merit?
Yeah, well, when I spoke at the beginning about my time at Lilly in La Jolla and the company Hybertech, which was the kind of prototype, original biotech company, there are almost 200 companies formed by people who came from Hybertech. Quite extraordinary. So that's a really great example of how, of how one company seeded the growth of an industry really effectively in San Diego. And I think, obviously, I'm not wishing that Abselleris people all leave Abselleris, but, you know, which is not, which is not the intention. But the fact is that there will be people within the environment who will have ideas and who will think about starting other companies and to develop their ideas. And one of the critical things is that in BC, that BC, many companies that are founded in BC elect to leave and move to the US. And that's been something that has happened over a long period of time. Abselleris really wants to stay here, and it's a very powerful statement with regard to Vancouver and British Columbia.
Yeah, I agree. Attract, rather than attract, more like retain and elaborate on from that point. I'm looking at economic diversification and sustainability. And while we can be attracting talent from other parts of the world, it's really what's created and innovated here that will take off. So I'm encouraged by your words. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kerr?
Yes. Thanks so much for taking the time to come to speak to us. I really appreciate it. I'm interested in your thoughts on the importance of having a world leader in biotech locate within the inner part of a city in terms of the graduate students and the students looking for employment. They're young, you know, they're, do you have a sense of the kind of geographic location of their work that is most appealing to them?
Yeah, I mean, young people do tend to like to live in cities. And it's fantastic that there is an opportunity to develop this particular site in this particular way. And of course, what young people bring to a city, of course, is a lot of other, a lot of other secondary gain in terms of different types of industries that spring up to support their residents and their involvement with the local community. So I think this is quite important. It's actually quite hard to, to, to think of, you know, how do you facilitate biotechnology situation within relatively central city locations? But it's a clean industry in this case. And when I was in London, we founded this company MedCity specifically for that aim because actually biotechnology didn't tend to locate in the city. But where you get those little hubs of technology forming, you get a community around this and you get, in fact, the developments, you know, for example, the tech city developments in London, in Shoreditch, created such a boom in that Shoreditch community in terms of, in terms of culture as well as in terms of technology and science. So, yeah, that's a long answer, I'm afraid. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah. Are there a lot, do you know if there are a lot of UBC graduates that are employed by Abselleris?
I don't know the full number of UBC graduates employed by Abselleris, but there are a lot, yes. And an increasing number, I would say, yeah.
Good to know. Thanks so much for taking the time to speak to us.
Thank you. That's it for questions. I appreciate you coming in this evening, council. That was speaker, thank you so much. That was speaker one of 14. And it is 7:00 PM. We're moving on to speaker two, David Van Hemmen. David Van Hemmen, speaker number two.
Mayor, speaker two has withdrawn.
Okay, thank you, clerks. We have speaker number three, Nancy Harrison.
Yes, hello.
Hi there. Please go ahead. You're up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Great. Thank you. I would first like to acknowledge that I'm speaking to you from North Vancouver, the traditional ancestral and unceded territory of the Squamish, Tsleil-Wauti and Musqueam nations. My name is Nancy Harrison, and I'm a venture partner with a venture capital company called Amplitude Ventures based here in Vancouver. I've been involved in the life sciences community as a venture partner and venture capitalist, funding building companies, as well as being an entrepreneur, founding several biotech companies. I've also served on several not-for-profit boards in the biotech sector, as well as others, including Polygon Gallery in North Vancouver, and I am the past chair of Life Sciences BC, our local industry association in BC. For over 30 years, I've had the honor of being located in Vancouver and in working in the biotech sector, what I consider the initial impact investing and technology sector. Watching it grow from a nascent group of companies to a world-class biotech hub. Vancouver, through organizations like UBC, as you heard from Dermot, SFU, Cancer Agency and other academic institutions, has always been known for leading science. Now we're a company, now known and lead develop important medicines. They are, in fact, global leaders. Abselleris is one of these companies. BC life sciences companies attracted over $2 billion of investment in 2019 and 2020. A lot of people don't know that BC is the home to Canada's fastest-growing life sciences sector and one of BC's fastest-growing sectors generally. This type of capital under the community is allowing companies to scale and build the momentum to become foundational companies in the ecosystem. This is imperative as it creates local companies that act globally and which allow our companies to become sustainable. We are seeing this momentum translate into great job opportunities for recent crowds and experienced people in the sector as well. These jobs are highly educated, well-paying, and are the types of jobs Vancouver really wants to support and build on. Abselleris is a key leader in the ecosystem, and it's imperative that they have the environment they need to scale and become one of our foundational, or what we call, anchor companies. Right now, one of the biggest challenges we face for our local companies is access to lab space. I can't tell you how many calls I've received in regard to this and how many of my companies that I fund are seeking lab space. Increasingly, that lack of lab space is forcing our new startups and growing companies out of the city as they cannot find access. The Mount Pleasant area of Vancouver, with its industrial zoning and central location, is an ideal place to expand. We all know that Vancouver is a great place to live. I moved here 30 years ago. By supporting in this initiative in this area of the city, which is centrally located, it will also help support attracting the talent that a company like Abselleris needs to grow. This location is vibrant, is a vibrant area growing close to Transit, the Research Institute and downtown. Once people are recruited in this sort of ecosystem, we have seen from other centers, such as Kendall Square area in Cambridge, Massachusetts, or the Seattle South Lake Union area, that these communities continue to grow and feed off themselves, almost creating a sort of flywheel effect. People tend to stay, and the spin-off effects of people coming and companies and capital continue to help the ecosystem. By ensuring Abselleris stays and is able to. By ensuring Abcella stays and is able to establish itself in the Mount Pleasant area, the ecosystem will benefit from many things, some of which you've already spoken about. The growth of Abcella itself into an anchor company with its world-class science. Most of us do this business because we truly care and want to impact human health, and that's really something that I know the Abcella founders and employees feel. Increased employment opportunities for well-educated, high-paying jobs such as U B C grads, et cetera. Spin-out companies from the people at Abcella, leaving Abcella and starting new companies happens all the time, and we see that with other businesses like Stem Cell, Vime Works, and others. Spin-out companies with utilized Abcella technology. And in fact, I participated in helping spin one of those companies out earlier this year that has a collaboration with Abcella, a radio pharmaceutical company growing here locally in B C. And for other organizations, the training that an organization like Abcella can provide to people means, yes, unfortunately, they might naturally leave Abcella, but they will join other local firms, and they will help support this ecosystem. This is a very exciting time for us in the local biotech community, which I truly believe is revolutionary over the last almost three decades that I've worked here. Providing this opportunity from the city to support and sustain this company here really anchors a sustainable, clean, high-growth biotech company and and biotech sector generally. And I really hope I have been able to convey that excitement to you today. And I thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thanks so much for calling in today. I don't see any questions for you, so I will move on to the next speaker. Counsel, the next speaker is Joseph Garcia, Speaker number four.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. My name is Joseph Garcia. I completed a law degree at U B C and have worked in Vancouver as a lawyer for more than twenty-five years. I'm in I'm strongly in support of the recommendation. Thank you for seeking community input. It is an important and valued part of living and working in our diverse community. I appreciate being given this opportunity. I believe that I have a unique perspective to share based on my personal experience. I was the first patient in B C to receive Abcella's antibody drug, and I believe it saved my life. These remarks are driven by admiration, gratefulness, and hope. I think it is critically important to value and support our local champions. In less than ten years, the founders of Abcella have created a leading biotech company with international reach, and I don't say that lightly. It is a cutting-edge drug development enterprise. It has created billions of dollars of value, employs a vast number of highly educated people, has one hundred and fifty-five programs with thirty-five different partners, and recently completed the largest life sciences I P O in Canadian history. Abcella is further evidence that impactful businesses can flourish in Vancouver with the right support. Abcella cannot do it alone. Despite its strong team and desire to make a positive impact, it has an urgent need for lab space and integrated facilities. In my view, Abcella's most important contribution to date has been our COVID nineteen response, having developed the first antibody therapy authorized by the F D A in Health Canada. An earlier presenter noted the treatment statistics. It's worth reinforcing that an estimated eleven thousand lives have been saved to date. I never imagined that I would participate in a public forum where I will discuss personal family matters. I do so today because I think it is important. All of us have experienced illness, either personally or in people we care about. Illness can leave people feeling vulnerable and scared. In March of this year, I felt fear, fear of dying, and considerably more fear of leaving my young family behind. I'm a partner in a Vancouver law firm. I am married and have two young daughters, aged eight and eleven. For over thirty years, I've worked for or with life sciences companies, these incredible entities that employ highly talented people, often go on to develop medications or other treatments that address unmet medical needs. It never occurred to me to consider that people that I know and respect would develop a drug that almost certainly saved my life. I now appreciate the irony. On December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, I had distal pancrectomy surgery at V G H, a leading healthcare facility that we are fortunate to have. The good news is that the surgery was successful and I do not have cancer. Unfortunately, that was not the end of my journey. Over the next four months, I encountered a series of serious post-surgical complications. I had multiple hospital stays and lost forty-two pounds. In late February, during a seventeen-day at V G H, I contacted COVID. Within a few hours of the diagnosis, my health rapidly deteriorated. At the time, I had an I V and was receiving antibiotics to counter serious infections. I also had a monitor that recorded my blood oxygen saturation levels. I did not sleep that night as I watched the monitor record progressively lower, excuse me, blood oxygen levels. My COVID symptoms were awful, and it appeared I would need oxygen and possibly a ventilator. I had many discussions with my physicians. The physicians faced a conundrum. At some point, the treatment regime for infections would conflict with certain recommended COVID treatment protocols. Then what do you do? Thankfully, it did not come to that. I was aware of Abcella's antibody and asked for the medication. As they say, it takes a village. The drug had been approved for use, and it was available in Vancouver. I am deeply grateful to the physicians, staff, administrators, pharmacists, and many, many others, you know who you are, who helped me get the medication, and I am forever in your debt. I had noticed discernible COVID symptoms after twenty-four hours, and I am now fully recovered both from COVID and from pancreatic surgery. I will close my remarks by asking you to believe in the possible. Believe that we can accomplish great things in Vancouver, both for our residents and the international community. We can do that in an environmentally responsible manner that provides sustainable jobs, jobs with salaries that allow people to live proximate to where they work. That type of development further supports our ecosystem. In my view, it just makes common sense, and in this specific case could legitimately lead to the discovery of life-saving treatments that directly benefits the health of people in our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing your story. You do have counsel questions from counsel. Counselor Dijonova, please go ahead.
Thank you so much for sharing that very personal and moving story with us tonight. As we consider we're quasi-judicial bodies, so I have to consider the application in front of us. But do you do you feel that having Abcella here in Vancouver helped to put, you know, the treatment that you received on the map and that perhaps healthcare professionals are more likely to be aware and know about treatments such as this if they are in their own backyard in city? Do you think that that's important in considering this application?
I do for for multiple reasons. It, you know, to have companies in our local community, you know, look, whether it's in Vancouver or in another jurisdiction in Canada, you know, assist in providing medications that can benefit not just our community but international, you know, patients, I think is is very important. And it does give, you know, you know, it's very helpful for governments to understand the benefits, both in obtaining products from companies within Canada, the jobs, taxes, the ability to support the broader community through, you know, affiliated jobs. So in short, yes, I do believe it's important to be part of a leading-edge industry and to have those developments created within Canada and to have those treatments purchased in Canada. And I do believe that Abcella, in doing it in Canada, was able to bring it to the attention of the federal government and and have it acquired for use by patients in Canada. So I do think that made a difference, and and I'm personally very grateful.
Thank you very much for sharing with us and for answering my question as well.
Thank you, Counselor Carr.
Well, I just have to say, I'm just so appreciative of you coming to share that story, that personal story is extremely moving and inspiring and thought-provoking. So I only say thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you so much. There are no other questions. I'm going to move on to Speaker number five. Speaker number five is Dr. Alan Eaves.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can. Please, thanks for coming in tonight. And we have up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Okay. I'm supportive of this application, and I've been a city resident for almost fifty years. I am a medical oncologist and hematologist and founded the Terry Fox Lab for Cancer Research and was also head of has headed that for twenty-five years, and I was also head of the Division of Hematology at U B C and the V G H for eighteen years and built the first really large bone marrow transplant program in Canada. But in two thousand and six, I had to retire because I was sixty-five, which was the rule then. And so I moved across the street to a small company that I had started to sell some of the products we just we we needed in in our research in the Terry Fox Lab and started to sell those around the world. And this these products have now grown to us to a company that's we have over sixteen hundred employees, and our sales are approaching four hundred million. We are totally export-oriented, only three percent of our sales are in Canada, ninety-seven percent are outside of Canada, and those dollars come into British Columbia. And of course, export dollars are two to three times more stimulatory of the economy than dollars generated within an economy. And so actually, in Vancouver, we spend about sixty-three million dollars just on suppliers to to support our our company. So we make tissue culture media and other agents for supporting cancer and other research and infectious disease research as well. For example, in in the C D C in Wuhan, they were having trouble growing cells, pulmonary epithelial cells that were required to to culture and grow the virus, and they switched to our tissue culture media. And we're then able to get the cells to grow and get enough virus that they could get the sequence and share that result with the rest of the world, which of course is the basis of Moderna's and Pfizer's vaccine. So we we we're right in there, and we're we're our sales are are growing at twenty-five percent. In fact, we've always grown at about twenty to twenty-five percent a year since nineteen ninety-three when we started. And so we have over two hundred Ph.D.s, about same number of M S Cs, and everybody else is pretty much a B S C or an engineer. So we're very knowledge-based, and we are basically a global company. So I have about eleven hundred employees here in Vancouver, about three hundred in Europe, and about the same number in in the U S, and about fifty in China where we work for distributors there. So so we're they're very much an international company. And we are in two buildings in Vancouver, one building on at Seventh Avenue and and Ash, which was built for us by Tressy and which looks like it belongs to the cancer agents or the cancer foundation, but it was really built for us. I didn't lease it all, which regrets, which I regret, but but that we soon grew that and I grew that. And now our head office is actually on Station Street in a large building there between 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 the terminal and industrial way. And 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 we outgrew that, and I grew that as well. And we wanted to build across the street, if you know that area, there's a bunch of old warehouses there, and we wanted to actually take over that that space and build a three hundred thousand square foot research and business facility there. And unfortunately, that was that was about ten years ago, and we negotiated with the city of Vancouver for several years, and we're not successful. So I've moved my company out to Burnaby, where we're building a campus on Production Way there. So we've got leased for forty years a huge warehouse, two hundred thousand square feet, and we're converting that into an advanced biologics manufacturing facility. And and we leased another building on Production Court nearby, and we'll be probably building other buildings nearby as we as we grow because over the next.
We're just at the five minutes, but you do have questions from Counselor Carr. Counselor Carr, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you again very much for coming to speak to us and relaying your story. I'm also curious, are you employing a lot of graduates from, say, U B C and, you know, our local post-secondary institutions or from all over?
Well, from from all over, but a lot from U B C. And before COVID, we had a hundred co-op students at any one time. So we're we're big. We train all sorts of people. We have internally, we have over five hundred courses that we teach our employees because many of them are are not familiar with all the latest technologies in science or or the business skills that we we require.
And and are, I mean, what's sort of the average age of your employees? Are there a lot of them young?
Yeah, our average age is about thirty-five. And we have forty, actually, fifty percent of our employees are women, and fifty percent of our executive group are women as well. And we feature basically native art in our in all our buildings. And and as you go, and we're a big supporter of the of the Science Center. And if you look there, there's a statue I had made for to celebrate Tillamookala, who are the international fathers of stem cell biology. So we're we're big supporters of science.
Yeah, I can see that. I'm just curious about the link between having these kinds of facilities in Vancouver and what it means in terms of hiring, you know, our our university grads and and where they live. So do a lot of your employees live in Vancouver? Are they do they appreciate having employment that is local here?
Well, they they really like to be located in in Vancouver, but now people are moving out to Burnaby because that's where we're basically going to move our whole operation because we couldn't get the space we needed in Vancouver.
Okay, that's that. Thank you. I really appreciate you relaying this information to us.
Thank you so much. Very much appreciate you coming in this evening and all you do for our city and country. Thanks so much. Counsel, we're going to move to the next speaker. We note here, our next speaker is Brad Becker, Speaker number six.
Hello, Mayor and Counselors. My name is Brad Becker, and I'm a small business owner in the Mount Pleasant area. I'm a chartered accountant in public practice, and I'm calling to support this application by Abcella. My situation is nothing like the other speakers, but I just would like to state that from a different perspective, that I moved from Carersdale to Mount Pleasant because I realized that in Mount Pleasant, in the Main Street area in particular, I could live a European lifestyle whereby I rarely have to drive, and I have everything in my community because I work and live there. And I particularly like that area, which I'm very close to, the Mount Pleasant area, where the multi-zoning is is available. And I think these types of applications is what exactly we should be considering because I think this is encouraging opportunity for the employees to, first of all, get good jobs, reasonably paying, I'm hoping, and that will allow them to live within their community and not have to to commute to downtown. And with the the employees living in their community, I just think it makes it a wonderful environment. I'm personally experiencing that myself. So I would just like to bring that forward and would like you to consider this project as I think it would be a shame that Abcella would have to go elsewhere.
Okay, thank you so much for your input tonight. I don't see any questions for you, but again, thank you so much for participating. Going to move to the next panelist, Counsel. The next speaker is Bailey Miazga. The next speaker is Bailey Miazga.
Hi.
Hi there. Please go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Bailey Miazga and I am a resident of Vancouver and live just off of Main Street. I am speaking in favor of this project tonight and of the larger biotech campus proposed for the area. I first heard about Absellerah in twenty twenty when we were all waiting for a hero through the COVID-19 pandemic. My husband is a doctor and it really felt like we were starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel. I don't know about you, but I love a success story and this has to be one of my favorites. As a UBC alumna, I also feel some thunderbird pride for Absellerah. As you've heard from the other speakers tonight, their reputation precedes them. I was born and raised in Vancouver and I can honestly say I've never had to think about how much industrial land we have. When I learned that it was only something like seven percent, I realized that companies like Absellerah are faced with more obstacles than I imagined. If Absellerah can accomplish all that they have in the last two years during a pandemic, who is to say what they can accomplish with more employees and more space? If they're allowed to grow, I'm certain that they will in turn help grow Vancouver's reputation as a hub for innovation. I would love to see these applications proceed. I applaud council for taking the step to allow them to advance before the conclusion of the Broadway Plan. And I hope you continue the momentum and approve it tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you for calling in this evening. Just checking here, we don't, I don't see any questions for you. So I will move to the next speaker. Thank you so much. The next is speaker number eight, Neil Wiles. Plurks, do we have Neil Wiles on the
I'm here, can you hear me?
I sure can. Please go ahead. Up to five minutes.
Excellent, excellent. I'm Neil Wiles, the Executive Director of the Mount Pleasant BIA. And I'm here to speak in support. I will be brief. There is a benefit though of being a little further down the list. I got to hear some great, great stories. Thankful not to follow speaker number four. When Absellerah saved his life, I compete with that. I think this is a great opportunity for Vancouver. I had a business in Yelltown for twenty years and saw lots of gaming companies and animation companies moved in because, you know, one moved in, then another moved in and another moved in. And I think this might be an interesting opportunity for Vancouver, for Absellerah to be an anchor biotech tenant in the Mount Pleasant area. As I represent the businesses in the area, we're more than pleased to see another major employer move in. Mount Pleasant's been growing in leaps and bounds. And I think adding more jobs to support these businesses is what we seek. I've heard lots of bits and pieces about access, so on and so forth. This is what we've been building for. You know, the Canada lines there, all the bike routes are there, other transit lines there. As you know, we have the Broadway line coming up. Companies like this moving into the area seems a perfect fit. I, I do want to echo some of councillor Swanson's concerns that there's some pressure on, on artist space and, and that. But I did hear, and as I'm coming later in the presentations, Shoreditch in London is a big biotech hub there. And I traveled there, when we could travel, with my family and I dragged them along to Shoreditch because it's the big mural area of, of London. And I spent a lot of time there because Mount Pleasant is a mural area in Vancouver. So interesting to find a parallel there. And hopefully that with a lot of biotech moving in, that our murals will survive and thrive and continue to be a key attractant to our area. I know that on this site, it was, and I heard somebody else refer to it as AMB Sound. It wasn't AMB Sound, it was AMB Party Rentals. And that was a sixty-year-old business. They haven't folded. They just moved to Strathcona. They just moved to another area of town, which is great. So nice to see a new business moving into this space, a different business. And I think that it's going to benefit our local economy. And I think it's going to benefit the, the hyper-local economy of Mount Pleasant. Thank you very much. Thank you for loving to speak.
Thank you for your time tonight. I don't see any questions for you. So I'm going to move down the list to the next speaker. Thank you though again. Speaker number nine is Andrew Dunn.
Mayor, speaker nine and ten are not on the line.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll go to speaker number eleven, who is Naomi Linkletter.
Excuse me, excuse me. Hello?
Oh, hi there. You're a little faint.
Well, you've, you just bypassed somebody. He was in order. What, so, yeah, so what
Well, we'll go, we'll go with Naomi Linkletter and then we'll, we'll get the clerks to check.
No, we'll go in the order that we expected to go in numerically. Why has it changed?
I'm on the line.
He's on the line.
I'm here. Just tell him I'm excited.
Yeah, I'll pass the phone over to the person ahead of me.
Hi, I, can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now? Thank you.
Excellent. I'm, I'm not sure why I was considered not on the line because I'm, I'm here on the line listening attentively to what's going on. Anyway, my name's Andrew Dunn. I'm a resident of Mount Pleasant Industrial Area. Been there for a few months now. Been a resident of Vancouver for fifteen years. And I'm going to speak, I'm going to break the streak and speak in opposition to the rezoning. And it's not in opposition to Absellerah as a company. They sound like an amazing company. Biotech is a fabulous industry and it's certainly something that Vancouver should encourage. The question that you've been asked as a councillor isn't whether or not Absellerah is a fabulous company who do great work and save people's lives. The question you've been asked is whether this is the right fit for this area. Councillor Swanson and councillor Weaver have already raised questions around gentrification, which, which haven't really been properly answered by the city planners because there isn't really an answer to that, is there? What you're, what you're suggesting is that we accept a rezoning that's going to encourage gentrification and that's going to increase the pressure on costs for not just the arts community in the area, but also the small businesses. We have, we have bakeries, we have catering companies, we have recording studios, we have auto body, we have flooring companies, we have blinds manufacturers. We have lots and lots of businesses that, that while they don't employ three hundred people, they are anchor businesses and the people live and work within the community. And we, we saw what, what happened with, with Hootsuite recently. And it was interesting that Mr. McCutcheon described the decision on the part of Absellerah to base the global HQ, I think he described it as, the global HQ of Absellerah in Vancouver, which is great. I mean, but you know, the clue is there, global HQ. What happens if at some point down the line, after we've gentrified, after we've lost all of the small businesses in the arts community, Absellerah decides that after all, they need more space, they need to expand somewhere else that isn't Vancouver, we, we lose everything that we have for some speculative gain that, that might happen? That's not to say that, as I say, I don't object to the company themselves. It's whether it's a good fit for this particular area. And I'd be interested to hear whether or not alternatives were properly considered. One of the things that Mr. McCutcheon said was important to the company was infrastructure. So being, being on a Skytrain line, being with good cycling infrastructure. And so somewhere like Flats would, would meet those criteria. So I'd be interested to know why specifically, what particular requirement is there? Or for the, there needs to be some kind of campus for Absellerah, all in one location? And it has to be in Mount Pleasant because that's where they're located right now. The argument that there isn't enough lab space, well, they're not taking over lab space. They're, they're building new lab space from scratch. So wherever they go, they're going to need to do that. So I, I don't really see why that's an argument for the current zoning request. And that's what, what you've been asked to consider is the rezoning request as it currently stands. Is it something that's, that's going to have the impact that's been suggested? And then what's going to happen about the gentrification, which is doubtless going to follow? I mean, you're going to lose all of these businesses that opened here, these family businesses that opened here for years. It's interesting to hear the, the Business Improvement Association gentleman, I'm sorry, I don't remember his name, talking about the benefits when the site doesn't actually fall within that area. As you know, it's not part of the MB, MP BIA. It's, it's outside of that particular area. So yeah, that, that's my main concern is the gentrification. And I don't think it's been properly dealt with. I don't think councillor Swanson's question's been answered. And then also the, whether or not the alternative was considered. We're going to end up with a fantastic building. It looks fabulous and it's got lots of green credentials. But it's going to be in a part of the city that, in a recent article in the Taiyi from Christopher Chung back in June, I think it was, he was talking about shade inequalities in the city. As a resident of, of Mount Pleasant Business Area, we actually had to leave during the, the height of the heat dome because it was, it was actually impossible to live on our street within our apartment. And we don't have trees. We don't have any shade. So there's going to be, basically what you're doing is you're privatizing access to things like shade, to, to quality environments in which people are going to live. So while on the surface, it looks like a, a great thing. And I fully support Absellerah expanding their business and employing people with well-paid jobs. Although a lot of those well-paid people, if they choose to live within this area, that's going to put increased pressure on rents and property values, which again, is going to lead to gentrification, of course. So I'm just not convinced that the city is paying enough attention to, to those kind of impacts. And I'm going to have more to say when we come to, to the neighboring site, one fifty. So I'll leave it at that for now. But, but if I'm allowed to ask a question of the planners, it would be that. What consideration was given to alternative sites? And then if I was allowed to ask a question of Mr. McCutcheon and of Absellerah themselves, beyond it being like a vanity project of having a huge campus on, in Mount Pleasant, what's the specific requirement for all of these sites to be within walking distance of each other? Thanks very much.
Do you have questions, councillor Dejana? Please go ahead.
Thanks very much. As we consider the context of this specific project within the context of the neighborhood and, you know, the district schedule and the neighborhood, as you've mentioned. And you've mentioned housing and employees. I'm not going to go there. I'm just going to say, what, what type of businesses do you support moving into the neighborhood and community? If not this, and you've said you support Absellerah being somewhere else, what do you support right now in the community? Is it just, there's no room for any, anything else? Or is it just specifically this project? If, if you don't mind me asking, thanks.
I don't mind you asking at all. Thank you for the question. No, it's, it's, I, I like there to be a mix of businesses, a mix of small businesses within the area who aren't likely to up sticks and move because they're grounded within the area. Whereas a global biotech firm, whilst, I can certainly see the advantages of that. I mean, it, it's unquestionably advantages that would accrue from having something like this. But it's whether or not that's outweighed by the disadvantages. And the disadvantages are that the gentrification that would, would absolutely follow from that. I mean, some of the other speakers, a couple of the other speeches, speakers mentioned Shoreditch in London as an example. Now that's pretty much a case study in gentrification. You go to Shoreditch in London and what used to be a working class part of the city is now gastro restaurant pubs and hipster paradise. Frankly, it, it's completely changed. And, and I mean, it's, it's an aesthetic judgment or it's a value judgment whether or not that's a good thing. But so I, I support a mix. I support a mix of businesses. I think sacrificing the current character of the, of the neighborhood and then in the hope that a business decides to stay and become an anchor, I, I, I don't think we've taken the risks into account enough.
Thanks. Another question, just within the context of the neighborhood. You'd mentioned a mix of businesses. Can I ask, you don't have to answer, do you support businesses like Hootsuite? That's just literally a block away from here.
Well, I, I mentioned Hootsuite as a, as one of the companies that exemplifies the risk that we face with this kind of thing because they, they basically promised big and then downsized, didn't they? So do I support
There's like this Sarah McLachlan School of Music. Do you support that use in the community?
Do I support Sarah McLachlan School of Music? Are you, are you going to go through a list of businesses?
No, I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out because I, I do, I have my notes here. And you've mentioned certain, certain, certain businesses you support. And I'm just wondering how you choose that list? How do you decide? Because I'm really trying to understand that.
I'll, I'll try and answer that for you. The, the way I decide would be to have a good mix, to have a mix of sizes of business, a mix of types of business, to have a kind of, enough of a mix so that any impacts, any economic changes don't necessarily have a completely negative impact. I mean, if the whole area had one employer, you can see how that might be an issue. So if we decide that for rezoning purposes, we wanted Mount Pleasant Industrial Area to become a place which has three large anchor businesses. And then there was something that happened economically that rendered their staying in the area inefficient and they decided to move, that would be a risk, would it not? Now, if we have what we have now, which is a spread of all sorts of different small to medium-sized businesses and we have arts communities, we have group shops, which I'm, I'm really in favor of, I can tell you that. And we have cafes and we have restaurants. We have a, a real mix. And I'm concerned that when we consider these large-scale projects, which, which look great from, from the city's perspective, I'm sure, it's whether or not you've taken into account the impact of that to, to a large enough extent.
Thank you for clarifying. I really appreciate your presentation and you answering my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hartwick.
Thank you. Been thinking about the merits of your argument. This is a homegrown business. Again, what we're doing here is, is evaluating the trade-offs. I agree with you on that, you know, the plus and minus call. This is a homegrown success story. Entrepreneur has grown that has the ability to anchor further economic diversification in the city. It's not a silicon hyphenate that's coming in and setting up shop. Is it not, and, and from, you know, from an economic standpoint, it, the retention of businesses that you have is essential. You know, it's more difficult to go and compete to bring new businesses in and, and they can often be highly mobile and go wherever they can get the best deals. So you do have a home team advantage for something that has been developed locally. Is it not possible? I mean, I, I take your point about gentrification and anybody that says that rezoning a piece of property is not going to increase its value, I have a bridge, I'll sell them. But knowing that, is it not possible to have them within this area and still have a mix as you described?
First of all, I think Nick Danford might be in the market for a bridge if, if what you're discussing is true. You know, anybody who says that gentrification's not going to increase taxes and the burden on small businesses. Yeah, I agree with you entirely. I don't know whether the fact that it's a homegrown company, beyond that being a point of pride and something that we should all be, be thankful for, is something that necessarily and biotech is, is global. You know, it, it's nice, but it would also be nice, and it would also be in Vancouver if they weren't located in Mount Pleasant, but had considered somewhere which maybe wouldn't have the gentrification impacts, so somewhere else within the city. And that was one of my questions as to whether or not any alternatives had been considered. There might be a reason that I'm unaware of, that, that the Flats wasn't considered, for instance. I, I know that there's a, there's a new media and tech hub developing at the Flats with BCIT and
On the Great Northern Way there, yeah.
Exactly. And, and that's, that's on a, you know, I, I used to, I work at Vancouver Community College. So I spend some of my time at the, at the Broadway Campus. And it's great to cycle along there. And we've got VCC Clark, we've got the Skytrain Station nearby as well. So I, I'm, I'm just not entirely sure why, what, what, what the decision-making process was like so that, that in, that it was determined that the Mount Pleasant that it was determined that the Mount Pleasant industrial area was was the place. I I recognize that it's it's next door to where they're currently headquartered. But you know, and but it's also, it's expanding the size of the campus massively. So there would be nothing to stop them just relocating the campus itself. So I I don't really get, I I haven't heard enough tonight to explain to me why it was necessary for it to be specifically in this area.
And that's likely a business decision as they'd acquired that property as an anchor. But that is a question that we can can pose back. But I am persuaded that there's more to this than just being a point of pride. And that retaining, and so I'll just, sorry?
Is this a question section?
Yeah, no, I, yeah, thank you, Miss Mayor. Um, the the point is that there is a series of trade-offs here. And if we're we're trying to look at at retention and expansion-
Point of procedure, is is there, are we participating now or are we getting to questions?
No, I'm trying to get to the, if I would stop getting interrupted, I could finish making, get into the question.
Yep.
Thank you. So in on balance, as you consider these points, you're still persuaded that it's it's a bad decision for this location?
I am, yeah, I am, and I'm I'm more, I I think my concern about the effect on the existing businesses and the existing neighborhood as it currently stands, that's what attracted me to move here in the first place. I I was living in East Van. And then around about six months ago, I moved to two, basically two blocks south of where the the two buildings are being developed. And one of the things that really attracted me to this area was the mix that we have. And I'm really concerned, it might be a selfish concern, but I'm really concerned that the character of that is gonna be lost.
Thank you, speaker, that uh that's the time for councillor Hardwick's questions, five minutes.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much, you're calling in. And uh, we're on, I'm just gonna go back on the list because we had some problems. So I think that was Mister, sorry, that was Andrew Dunn. And now I'm gonna call Larry Sims's name again, Larry Sims there, clerk, speaker number ten.
Speaker ten is not on the line.
Thanks, Naomi Linklater, speaker number eleven.
Thank you.
Hello, up to five minutes, please.
Hi, my name is Naomi Linklater. And I also live in the area and I'm also very concerned about this project. Uh, I do agree that Absellerah sounds like a really wonderful company and um, but I don't understand why we have this narrative that somehow Absellerah can only continue to do the good work that they are doing if they somehow encroach on and displace an established art community in the protected area of uh of Mount Pleasant. Um, and I just, I'm I'm also really curious. Um, are there special zoning requirements needed to build purpose-built lab spaces? Like, um, you know, the industrial area is so valuable and so small and only allows the the, you know, the small businesses and art studios and stuff to function here because of the demands of those tiny little industries and manufacturing and all that type of stuff. So I'm just curious, um, is a purpose-built lab space, does it require a special zoning area to be built? Like, can it not have been built in another area? And why is it, you know, why are we sort of, this idea that somehow high-tech businesses, jobs that are provided to young people is more valuable than, you know, art communities that are experienced and mature? And, you know, artists also go to school. They also are intelligent, thoughtful people that provide lifesaving services to other people. I mean, people talk about San Francisco and Seattle as, you know, being supportive of the arts. IT moves there because those cities were wonderful cities. You know, it's, what makes Vancouver enjoyable are the artists. So I don't understand why we're cannibalizing one community to support something that could be definitely built somewhere else. And then I guess the question I would have for Murray McCutcheon is, does he actually believe a one-time purchase of art for his building will somehow benefit the local artists? I mean, that's a one-time purpose. If you displace the art community and you take away all their ability to actually make and create art, you're not really supporting the arts. I I imagine in the future, if this continues and they allow more of these biotech buildings to build on industrial areas, then most of our art will probably be imported from other cities that actually support their artists. And then I'm also a question for Nick Danforth. Why didn't your department persuade Absellerah to build into a more suitable part of the city? Why did they allow this disruptive project to get to this stage? I I was really surprised when they started building that it hadn't even been approved yet and they were building. So it it kind of makes me under- what motivated a company like Absellerah to think that before you even get approval, you can start building 'cause pretty much it's a done deal? And I actually walked out yesterday and talked to a lot of the people in the studios and the small businesses. And a lot of them didn't know anything about this project. They were very concerned on how it would affect their margins. And these are viable, healthy, thriving businesses that actually make our city feel European, that allow the people who live here to, you know, get your car fixed locally, to have your bread made locally, to buy clothing made locally, all those things. But, you know, if they're gonna be paying an increase in taxes because of the zoning changes in the community, they're gonna have to go elsewhere because they will not thrive. I I I guess that's it. So if anyone wants to answer my questions.
Um, in the the public hearing process during this section, we hear from you and consider what you say carefully. Uh, there will be a an opportunity for councillors to ask questions to the staff at the end of the, when we've heard all the speakers. So at this point, um, there's not a an opportunity within our bylaws to reply to questions, but I'm sure councillors have noted them.
All right. But I don't understand why, I I just felt, especially the questioning that Andrew got about somehow being against the project here, that it seemed like one of the councillors took it almost personally, like somebody is against Absellerah. We're not against Absellerah, we're actually just don't understand why one community of business people and are gonna be sacrificed for another community. Like, these people that work in-
And I'm sure you are, you're at your five minutes, uh, you're at your five-minute uh time limit. Um, so thanks so much for for calling in, there are no questions for you. So I am gonna move to the next speaker, thank you so much. Uh, council, we've got speaker number twelve is withdrawn. Next, we have Natasha Aurora. Natasha Aurora.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Sure can, up to five minutes, please.
Thank you. Uh, so my name is Natasha Aurora. I'm the president of the Student Biotechnology Network. I'm a UBC alumni and a scientist by profession. I'm a resident of Vancouver and I'm in support of the hundred and ten West Fourth Avenue and the Absellerah Biotech Campus. Uh, the ESPN is a student not-for-profit organization that provides students an autonomous forum to discuss and explore interest in biotechnology. Our vision is to create a thriving biotechnology community that attracts and retains the best and the brightest science students. We have students from UBC, SFU, BCIT and other institutions in the world mainland who participate in our mentorship programs where we connect students with industry power leaders such as Absellerah. Since twenty twelve, Absellerah has pioneered the single-cell microfluidic technology in Vancouver. Their single-cell screening, repeta sequencing and antibody enduring technologies has not only discovered BAMLA nevimab and ATSVI map antibodies, which are in phase three clinical trials and led to reduced hospitalization and prevented deaths for early COVID nineteen patients, but also discovered LYCOV fourteen oh four antibody to neutralize viral variants of COVID nineteen. With the rat of COVID nineteen still raging and the antibody research market projected to soar to about four hundred billion US dollars by twenty twenty-five, it is now more important than ever to support such innovation locally. Their partnership with Moderna and Lilly and other biotech giants seals the same fact. By doing so, this will attract talent not only from within Canada, from places such as Edmonton, Toronto or Montreal, but also from our southern neighbors such as Seattle, Portland and even hubs like San Francisco. This will not only boost Vancouver's economy, but will also be a step closer in putting Vancouver alongside mega biotech hubs such as New York City, San Francisco, Boston, London, United Kingdoms or even Basel, Switzerland. Keeping a local biotech company of such high prestige will also garner societal support from Vancouverites towards life sciences innovation, which in turn will bolster STEM programs and help tackle some prejudice against vaccination and drugs. Therefore, I support hundred and ten West Fourth Avenue and Absellerah Biotech Campus and request the council to help support local innovation. I thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak today. Thank you.
Thanks so much for your time today. Uh, I don't see any questions for you, uh, but appreciate you phoning in. Uh, thanks, we're gonna go to the next speaker. Speaker, we have, uh, speaker number fourteen is Peter Cullis. Peter Cullis, speaker number fourteen.
Uh, can you hear me?
Sure can, up to uh, five minutes, please.
Oh, okay, yes, I just wanna speak in support of this project. Um, my name is Peter Cullis, I've uh been a prophet at UBC for about forty years. Um, during that time, I've done a lot of work to um, in the in the biotechnology area, having spun off um about ten companies and also involved with three not-for-profits. And it really a driving force in that, in those endeavors. I did that employ about five hundred people locally of the the companies I've been involved in starting. A driving force in that has been retaining our our talent here in Vancouver. Uh, it's really been, uh, it's it's a over forty percent, well, actually it's probably a bit more than that, of the our graduates in science, technology, engineering, mathematics. Uh, we go south, go to the United States. And this is a, this is a terrible situation. Uh, the, um, you know, we're we're uh, we're not providing the opportunities here in Canada uh for the 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 talent that we have. And so this has been, as I say, a driving force. Now, I should say that this, the repercussions from doing this are enormous. Um, one of the companies is an example, one that I co-founded about ten years ago called Acuitas, uh, is uh, provided the so-called the fat bubble or the uh, the delivery vehicle for the messenger RNA vaccines is being produced by Pfizer, BioNTech. Uh, so, you know, this is instrumental in saving millions of lives around the world. It's having a huge, a huge impact, uh, and certainly bringing Vancouver to the attention of the world in terms of the, in terms of biotechnology and uh, and also a huge, huge talent. Now, Absellerah is 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 a, you know, a prime example of a of real excellence, but also of this ability to retain people here in Vancouver and maintain that that vibrancy that comes from having young people who are highly motivated and in the, and in the, in an industry that is um really destined to be the, one of the largest industries in the world, which is of course the health industry. Um, it's a, if we, if if we want to really contribute to the the well-being of the world, then this is a, this is a prime area to do it. Uh, so, you know, that's really, and people have said many, many of the things I was going to say uh before, uh, but uh, and there's been some concern about the the loss of vibrancy uh in the Mount Pleasant area. I think it's gonna be completely the reverse. Uh, that the um, the vibrancy that comes from having young people moving into the area uh from from having the jobs that can be provided by by Absellerah in this uh, in this area will make many of those companies, that those small businesses, not not to go away, but will be more of them in that area. And so we're gonna see, these are, this this will, this will provide for the local community, I I think, an enormous benefit. Uh, so I just wanna, that's basically all I want to say. Uh, I think we've spent quite a bit of time on this. But it's a, it, the primary thing for me is is keep, is keeping our talent local and uh, and and going for something to be best in the world. And Absellerah satisfies both of those, both of those aspirations. Thank you.
Thank you for your uh time today. I'm just checking to see, I don't see any questions for you from council. So I'll just thank you for coming in and participating in our public hearing this evening. Uh, council, that is it for registered speakers. Uh, what I'm gonna do now is I am going to um call three times for additional speakers. So this is the first call, if any speakers want to speak to this item, one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, code eight three four three three pound, and I'll just check with the clerks if there's anybody in chambers or on the line.
No speakers on the phone or in chambers, mayor?
Thanks, I'll go for the second call then, same information, that's on the live stream and on Twitter. Um, and clerks, I don't imagine there's anybody else there, but I will ask.
No one, mayor.
Thanks, so this is the third call, I counsel it's eight oh six. We'll come back at eight eleven and um conclude this first item. Thanks so much.
The council is currently in a short recess. If anyone currently on the line would like to speak to this item, you may press star one on your keypad. And to remove yourself from the queue, it's star two, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Do we have a mover then?
Okay.
Thanks. Okay. Do we have a mover then?
Second, Commissioner Kirby Young.
Thank you so much. We're going to move to debate then, and I will move the queue over here. Okay, so if anybody wants to speak to this item, please put yourself on the list. Commissioner Dejanova, Commissioner Hardwick, Commissioner Dejanova, please go ahead up to five minutes.
Thanks very much. First of all, I'd like to thank all of the speakers who took the time to speak with us regardless of what your position was or maybe on this. I'd really like to thank our staff and Absolar for working together on this application to move this forward. And I'm trying to separate the land use and zoning a little bit from Absolar and what they do, but I think that it's important to recognize the benefits also. We measure benefits as a council and we consider benefits. And some of those benefits include the art. Some of those benefits include childcare. Some of those benefits include housing, affordable housing, non-market housing, valuing nonprofit. And I do believe that there is a benefit to having Absolar in our city. And I do believe that this rezoning moves that forward. I, I also look at what this could bring and what this could say about our city as I've asked some of the speakers, you know, who, who not only shared pointy and but also very personal and moving stories with us tonight. And, and it's not just about what Absolar does, but I think it's about Absolar tracks. As we talk about workforce housing council, extended hour childcare, looking at making the city family-friendly, but also looking at resources while paying jobs, making sure that we are a leader. And that's all a part of being a world-class city. And I do believe that Absolar has a place in that. So I wholeheartedly will be supporting this and I wanted to thank our staff. I wanted to thank Absolar and all of the speakers, even those who didn't speak in support. I think that there's a time and a place also to consider protecting the arts. Also, and, and we have as the council done that, but I don't see this application as taking away from that completely. And maybe what we need to do is also consider outside of Mount Pleasant, in the Falls Creek Flats, in other areas around the city, how we can better support our arts. But I don't believe that it all hinges on this one application. I do think that it's also very important to note that aside from, you know, the very good innovative and, you know, cutting-edge technology and work that Absolar is moving forward with, that has put them on the world stage. But this offers an opportunity for us also, council, to attract more biotech companies to Vancouver, to create more jobs and to look at more opportunities. We talk about giving tools and resources to people who need that in our city. And I think that it's really important to consider how we're going to do that. And I think this is a way to do that. So I will be supporting this and I hope that this will be a unanimous decision. Thank you.
Commissioner Hardwick.
Yeah, I've been weighing the pros and cons on this application. And at the end of the day, what is it about? We've got land in an industrial area that is looking to be used by really a pioneering entrepreneurial biotech firm, which I think is terrific. We need to grow our own businesses and diversify our industry. That said, there was the concern about displacing other industrial uses. I am persuaded that the, the building details and the requirements of the lab aspect is legitimate. So the question is, what about the surrounding areas, the impact of gentrification, which is real? I've expressed many times my concerns about the, having worked in the film industry for many years, where we always were counting on that space down there for various different kinds of shops, which was important. But on balance, this is the kind of business that could be and should be retained as a catalyst. And I don't know that, that it will have a profound impact. I'm more concerned about what's going along on Sixth Avenue, actually, than, than this particular site. We want to retain what we've got, but we also need to diversify. And I'd rather be promoting a homegrown business than, you know, an American multinational coming in and setting up shop. So on balance, I am persuaded. Thank you.
Commissioner Kirby Young.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to try to be brief, but I do want to speak in support of the application for a number of reasons. I think that, oh, sorry, I just realized my video was off. For a number of reasons, I think that we have seen during the pandemic the impact of not having access to lab facilities and things like vaccine production on Canadian soil. And yes, this is not a vaccine. It's an antibody therapy that's used to treat COVID once someone has contracted it, but it's also a very significant and very timely medical treatment at a time when we are really struggling. And so if we don't find rooms and make ways and space for these types of businesses, I think that we really do run the risk of not having access to those services in our own country. And Vancouver has a huge role to play in that. I'm also acutely conscious, having said on the Metro Regional Planning Industrial Lands Task Force, that we have such an incredibly low vacancy rate, one of the lowest in North America, 0.1%, about 7% of our land base only zoned for industrial. And there, there are not really a lot of other sites to address the question specifically that we heard from some of the speakers that can actually be considered based on the zoning, you know, ability to acquire land and so on and so forth. So to me, this is pretty fundamental. We heard from speakers that spoke to not just sort of this scientific argument, but the human impact of this. And I think it was Speaker Four that talked about his own experience. It was very heartwarming and talked about believing in the possible. But there are also a lot of ancillary benefits because one of the challenges that we have in a city that is increasingly expensive to live in is that we have the highest sort of cost of housing, but we do not have the wages that accompany that. And these are good quality paying jobs in terms of providing a quality living for people that they can not just survive, but hopefully thrive in the city. And so those are fairly compelling points for me. I do really want to acknowledge with respect to this area, the importance of the artistic spaces from Beaumont Studios and we've got Vancouver Bean Alley down there, a number of artist production spaces that are centered in the area and the importance of retaining those spaces and the challenges that they have and the threat that they are under. I'm acutely conscious of that and I'm highly supportive of us looking at the options when staff brings them back with respects to having a benefit strategy that can meaningfully address and support those. So I just want to sort of send out that it's not that that's not heard, but we have a mechanism and a process to have a thoughtful policy discussion around how we can address some of those pressures that people are feeling. And I understand from the arts community's perspective, why a specific development project will trigger some of those ongoing anxieties and challenges that they have had around sustaining themselves, which has been incredibly challenging and difficult. So that's noted, that feedback is really heard and I want everybody to hear that. But I believe this project on its merits is worth supporting and I can honestly imagine saying no to it. The last comment that I'll make is that I realize for residents in the neighborhood that change is something that may be difficult in terms of moving forward, but council's job is to sort of look at things in balance and determine if it brings a broader benefit to a large number of people without placing any undue sort of lack of consideration upon the area residents. And it does support the intention of zoning and the council strategy that we have adopted in terms of adopting higher quality use of industrial space and intensifying the very limited industrial land base that we have. So for that reason, I'm going to support it. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Commissioner Carr.
Yeah, thank you. I'll also, thank you, Mayor. I'll also be brief. And I want to start by thanking staff in their preparation for this, thanking the applicant and thanking all the speakers who came, some of which were extremely moving. So I am supporting this. I'm supporting this, number one, because I think it's extremely important that we do grow our green economy here in Vancouver. We know that the Vancouver Economic Commission has identified the biotech and health fields as one key component of that economy. And this, of course, is a primary example of the kind of business that we do want to grow here. You know, at a time when the lack of lab space and the cost of land may drive companies to other parts of this metro Vancouver region, I'm extremely happy that we're able to accommodate this company here. Secondly, I really believe it's incredibly important to support sort of homegrown innovation that is globally significant. This company was at the leading edge of response to the COVID pandemic. And I'm extremely proud of that as a Vancouverite. And, and I, you know, I think supporting that particular globally noteworthy endeavor within Vancouver, keeping it in Vancouver is critical. It's also about the kind
Commissioner Carr, I think you've gone on mute.
Oh.
You're back. Okay.
Sorry, I didn't push anything. Sorry, it's about the kind of city we want, where we have employment here for young people graduating out of our post-secondary institutions, where they can stay within our city, not move to the suburbs or to other places, other cities, even out of country, to find the employment that their fields of professionalism gear them towards. So, you know, to me, that's, that's incredibly important. And to some of the concerns raised by some of the speakers, you know, about the small businesses, et cetera, you know, having all those young people, all those professional people, the scientists, et cetera, you know, in that Mount Pleasant area is going to support a very diverse set of local businesses and in terms of their, you know, eating, shopping, entertainment activities. So for all those reasons, I am fully in support.
Commissioner Domenado.
Thanks, Mayor. And echoing my colleague's comments, a couple of reflections on this application. I'll be speaking in support of the application. And I think it's important to note as we're talking about this area and recognizing the change and that the sectors that we're talking about, particularly industrial sectors, have changed over time and will continue to change and, and that's evolving. And biotech in particular has certain needs. It's not just when we look at a building that looks like, you know, just an office space, that's not exactly what we're talking about. And so I think that the rezoning application is very appropriate and really reflects the modernization. But I also think it's really important to consider, to, I think the point that Commissioner Carr was trying to make is what kind of city do we want? And do we want to be a thriving city where people can both live and work? In order to live here, people need to have jobs and they need gainful employment. And, and I was thrilled to hear from a number of the speakers who talked about how the roots of Absolar are from UBC and that we have students who are leaving UBC and then coming here and working and, and having an opportunity to stay in the city that they grew up in and that they love to be in. And so I, I think it's a real success story. And I do recognize like my colleague, like Commissioner Kirby Young, who acknowledged the change. And we recognize also the extreme benefits of the arts community as well within the neighborhood and within the community. But I actually think this is going to be a real positive and welcome addition to the neighborhood. And yes, it does mean change, but I think to be able to have biotech rooted in the city of Vancouver and to create jobs and employment opportunities close to transit, I think is a real win. And so I'm happy to support the application.
Thanks. Commissioner Swanson.
Yeah, I think it's good to support jobs and especially jobs that produce something that's useful. This were nonprofits, it'd be good if medical stuff was nonprofit. But anyway, that's not the world we live in. My hope is that the commercial linkage money can support the local arts community in this area and that when that report comes back to us in May, we'll have our eyes open for what that arts community needs and be able to direct some of that, some of those funds in their direction, especially if approving this causes land values to go up and rents to go up for them. especially if approving this causes land values to go up and rents to go up for them. That's it.
Thank you. That's it, counsel. Don't have any more debate or statements. So we've moved the vote on this item. Counselor Kirby. There you go, counsel. That's unanimous. Thank you so much for that. We are at eight thirty and have completed item one of ten. So I will move this to our next item, which is a rezoning on one fifty West Fourth Avenue. And I'm just going to ask, does anybody want to declare a conflict of interest on this? If not, we'll move to the summary of correspondence received in the application. Go ahead, clerks.
This is an application by TKAD Architecture and Design to rezon one fifty West Fourth Avenue from Industrial District to Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a seven-story industrial and office building, a height of twenty eight point nine meter and a floor space ratio of four point zero are proposed. General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval subject to the conditions set on the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence have been received since we refer to public hearing prior to the close of the speaker list and receive a public comment. Seven pieces correspondence and support, two pieces correspondence opposition. This represents all correspondence received up to four thirty P M. today.
Thank you so much for that. So we have Nicholas Danforth again for the rezoning center who has a presentation for us. Following from that, we'll hear from the applicant team and then questions to Stephanie Epple. So Nicholas Danforth, if you want to go ahead with your presentation.
Great. Thanks, Mayor Stewart. I'll try to make it as brief as possible. Good evening again, as mentioned, Nick Danforth. So the next application on the agenda is for a seven-story industrial and office building at one fifty West Fourth Avenue. So the site's located on the southeast corner of West Fourth and Columbia Street in the MPIA, right to the west of the proposal that was just reviewed by council. The property is zone industrial and is surrounded by other industrial zone properties, again, ranging from a single story to five. The site is under currently under construction with a development permit that was issued in 2020 that meets the provision provisions of the existing I one zone. The D P allows for a five-story building and an FSR of three. Approval of the rezoning application being reviewed this evening would allow for the additional two stories and approximately forty two thousand square feet of floor space to the building that's currently under construction. So the Mount Pleasant industrial area is a neighborhood along the Broadway corridor that has been identified in the Metro Core Jobs and Economy Land Use Plan as an area to increase job generating uses while encouraging a diverse economic base. The site's located within the middle of the MPIA. It's a ten-minute walk to two Canada Line stations, as well as a future station over at Main and Broadway. There's numerous childcare facilities indicated with the blue dot on the screen. And Jonathan Rogers Park is just two blocks south of the site. So this is the other application that was received following council's direction to consider two rezoning applications as an exception to the Broadway Plan interim rezoning policy in March this year. The proposal also responds to the Metro Core Jobs and Economy Land Use Plan to strengthen and diversify the city's industrial land area. So the proposal is for a seven-story industrial and office building. The building contains space intended for a restaurant that would be fronting Columbia Street. The FSR proposed is four with a total building height of twenty eight point nine meters or ninety five feet. So as part of the Restart Smart Vancouver Initiative in response to COVID, it's expected that six hundred jobs that would be generated from a development of this type and scale. So a virtual open house was held in June of this year. Sixty-three pieces of correspondence were held were received throughout the application review process. So feedback received was generally mixed with regards to the height, density and overall neighborhood fit of the proposal. Some folks did appreciate the proposed uses and the future tenant of the site and the associated jobs likely to be generated, while others did feel that the uses were better suited elsewhere in the city. So if approved, the project would deliver a cash C A C in the form of a set commercial linkage contribution of nearly four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which would be allocated towards childcare and or affordable housing in and around the metro core area. This contribution teamed with D C Ls and the public art fees associated with the site is expected that the project would yield nearly three point five million dollars in public benefits. So if that council staff do recommend approval of the proposed seven-story industrial and office building at one fifty West Fourth, subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix B. The proposal meets the intent of the Metro Core Jobs and Economy Land Use Plan, which seeks to expand industrial floor area within the MPIA. As always, staff and the applicant are available for questions. Thank you.
Thanks so much. I know the applicant teams here, applicant team, would you like to present or would you just like to answer questions?
Thank you, Mayor. I will make a short presentation.
Great. Okay, thanks so much.
Mayor and council, it's me again, Murray McCutcheon from Absellerah. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today on behalf of the rezoning application for one fifty West Fourth Avenue. I would like to first acknowledge that I'm joining you from the traditional ancestral and unceded territory of the Coast Salish peoples, the Squamish, the Slaywatuth and Musqueam nations. This project represents the other half, the first half, in fact, of Absellerah's state-of-the-art biotech campus. We are developing one fifty West Fourth Avenue in partnership with Dayhu as part of our commitment to invest in Vancouver for the long term and build an anchor company in Vancouver that will create hundreds of new jobs, contribute to the post-pandemic economic recovery and future growth of our community, and empower medical breakthroughs for patients globally. As you know, Vancouver, excuse me, Absellerah is a Vancouver-based company founded at UBC in 2012 and now employing more than three hundred and fifty people. In addition to being founded at UBC, the majority of our employees come from local universities and educational institutions. When considering our expansion, we certainly looked across the city, but proximity to our existing facilities in Mount Pleasant remains paramount. The nature of our work requires constant interaction between lab-based teams and the teams that support them. We have been at the forefront of the response to COVID nineteen and the antibody therapy we discovered in world record time has been delivered to more than six hundred thousand patients, saving an estimated eleven thousand lives. It continues to be a potent tool in the fight against the Delta variant. Our work on COVID nineteen is just a proof point of our technology and we have a portfolio of more than one hundred and fifty other therapeutic programs across a wide range of disease indications. The building at one fifty West Fourth Avenue is an active development and the city has issued development and building permits under the present zoning. We are proposing a modest increase of two additional floors to meet our lab space needs. We have hired two hundred people in the last year alone. We have an urgent need for this space to accommodate our growing team. The timely completion of this building is also important to connect our lab operations to our planned GMP manufacturing facility, which is bringing one hundred and seventy-five million dollars of funding from the government of Canada and is on track for completion in 2024. I want to thank council again for your time and ask for your support for this important project. As the co-owner and future tenant of this building, we are hopeful we can make this vision for expansion in Vancouver a reality. I will now pass over to Craig Taylor from TKAD, who will speak to the design features of the building. Thank you.
Thank you, Murray, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight. First of all, I'm very humbled by the work that Absellerah is doing and we are honored to be tasked with creating an environment that stimulates these innovative minds. First of all, I'd like to talk primarily about the use and the design of the project. And as noted in the previous project at one ten, the laboratory use is completely consistent with the existing zoning and is an approved outright use. It's a people-focused industry as well. It's more than just a warehouse or an industrial space that it doesn't give back to the community. And the Mount Pleasant community is just that, a very vibrant and active people-focused community. And so it's something that we've tried to focus on in the design of the project. The design in this is just Murray had suggested, just a very modest increase in the FSR in the density from three point oh to four point oh. We could have gone, we could have asked for a lot more, given the the planning studies that have been going on to date. But we chose just a very modest increase in that density. And the architecture of the building is a blend of industrial and office expression that is entirely appropriate with the Mount Pleasant area. It's not the sort of building that you would find in a downtown office core. It's the sort of building that belongs in Mount Pleasant. It has a raw and robust and honest expression. It involves a careful use of robust industrial materials at the ground, like boardform concrete. And as the building rises, it has a more refined composition of wood, glass and steel, as you would expect in an office building or in a high-tech or biotech facility. Another aspect that we've been trying to focus on a great deal is public realm improvements. We have significant setbacks to Fourth and Columbia. And the building sets back above the existing zoning height to significantly. And the materiality of those up floors is is a more ephemeral glazed expression, which reflects the sky and helps that those upper levels disappear. We've also added significant outdoor space and outdoor amenity on every facade of the building. So the employees from Absellerah will be able to have access to the wonderful views of the North Shore Mountains and English Bay and and to the Fraser Valley in the in the in the east. And we've also added a very large landscaped component between one fifty and one ten at the east end of the site to create an environment of respite in or an urban oasis, if you like. And so that's something that, again, employees can enjoy and help to to rest from their day of work and to stimulate their minds. Another thing is that the spaces in the in the building itself has been created in a very adaptable way, in a very flexible way to accommodate potential future uses in many years to come should Absellerah outgrow the space. And as we as we mentioned, the the density increase is very modest and as such, the height increase is very modest as well. And as a concern to local, local residents, the studies that we've seen to date indicate that this building will not be visible from Jonathan Rogers Park. And another aspect of the project is, as part of the rezoning process, we have, we're undertaking significant sustainability initiatives. We'll be seeking LEED gold certification. We'll have design, energy conservation strategies like triple glazing exterior sunshades, particularly on the southern, eastern and western facades. We've got a blue gleaming roof, just like one ten. We have significant wall installations, V R F heating and cooling systems, heat pump, domestic hot water heaters and lighting power densities that are twenty percent below ashtray targets. Enhanced commissioning, energy subsystem metering, low refrigerant emissions, reduced embodied emissions in 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 materials that we'll be using. We'll be verifying direct ventilation using H R Vs, low emitting materials and indoor air quality testing as part of the process. And included in the blue gleaming roof system or as part of that system will be integrated, we'll having a very comprehensive integrated stormwater management system. And like one ten, we'll increase bicycle parking and and enhancing our indoor trip facilities to to embrace a bike-to-work culture and to make it more attractive for the employees of the building. And in terms of accessibility, our tenant will be targeting Rick Hansen certification for an accessible workplace, as well as enhanced wayfinding signage, barrier-free exterior doors, automatic operating building entrance doors and and many more. And we'd just like to say that reiterate how, again, how how proud we are to be creating an environment for such wonderful minds that are improving by their to the industry into the future. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for that. It's checking now. Counsel, we've had the two presentations. Do you, are there any questions for staff or the applicant? I don't see any, so perhaps we can move to hearing from the public. To move to the list. We have speaker number one is Peter Zanstra. First, we have Peter Zanstra on the line.
Yeah, this is Peter Zanstra. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Have up to five minutes, please, whenever you're ready.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Mayor and council, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. As background, I'm the director of UBC's New School of BME, the Michael Smith Laboratories and co-founder of Vancouver-based Notch Therapeutics, where I'm also the chief scientific officer. It is through these roles that I recognize the incredibly exciting juncture we're at in the biotechnology ecosystem in Vancouver, really one of the hottest life science innovation sectors in North America. In Vancouver, we're lucky to have world-class universities and a flagship school of BME. In the school, we're educating over a hundred students per year in fundamental and translational aspects associated with the development of new health technologies. We are very excited to have anchor companies such as Absellerah in Vancouver as these companies provide jobs for the talent and help to develop a thriving economic sector, a sector where talent, facilities, capital and ideas catalyze each other onto new growth, new venture and technology creation that really ultimately impacts human health. It is only by developing and supporting such a robust ecosystem that we could retain and scale our made-in-Vancouver, Canada world-class biotechnology companies. Importantly, the facility that Absellerah plans to develop is a complex so-called wet lab space. Now, the wet lab has nothing to do with our rain, but has to do with the unique work that can be done in such space to discover and develop new medicines. Spaces of this type is extraordinarily rare in Vancouver and the investment that Absellerah is proposing here will benefit not only this company, but our community generally. I have seen from my previous role in Toronto how catalytic these types of facilities can be to the success and growth of an ecosystem. In summary, we have here in Vancouver a massive multi-decade economic opportunity to consolidate our emerging leadership in biotechnology. Many great local companies and startups that provide jobs to local graduates and drive economic activity in the city will benefit from this project. The challenge is retaining these companies so that they don't move elsewhere. Biotechnology is really an international game and without the construction of the type of infrastructure we're discussing here tonight, this will be very difficult. I am thus strongly supportive of this project. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thanks for calling in. I'm just checking here and I don't see any questions from Counsel Toria. So thank you so much for for your comments. And I will move to the next speaker is Jill Tipping. Jill Tipping, speaker number three.
Hi there. Sorry about that. I was delayed in coming off mute, if you can believe it.
Oh, well, that that never happens. Thank you so much. And please, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Counselors. Thanks for for giving me the time. My my name's Jill Tipping. I'm the president and CEO of B C Tech. I'm tremendously grateful to be joining you tonight from my home, which is on the traditional ancestral and unceded territories of the Musqueam, Slaywatuth and Squamish people. B C Tech is a member-based nonprofit and we're dedicated to supporting the growth of B C's tech economy. We've been based in Vancouver for our entire twenty-eight-year history. And we're deeply invested in Vancouver's economy. I'm here tonight to speak in support of this application. The tech sector and the life sciences sector are some of the fastest-growing industrial sectors globally and Vancouver is really well-placed to be a leader globally, but only if we seize the opportunity and only if we choose that kind of future. I'm so thrilled with the success that Absellerah has already had and you've heard some of the life-changing stories of the impact of their work tonight. And I'm so proud that they are choosing to invest significantly in the infrastructure of Vancouver to establish much-needed wet lab space and to establish a secure footprint for themselves in the city. I wanted to talk a little bit about why we call companies like this anchor companies. We chose the word anchor for a reason because we imagined, like a boat that's floating on the water and could be anywhere, when it is anchored, it is stable, it is safe, it is secure and it is connected to to the land beneath it. it is secure, and it is connected to the land beneath it. Anchor companies are not transitional, they aren't short-term. They're deeply invested in the communities in which they live and they're sustainable sources of future economic contribution and development. Earlier this evening, I heard the question, what is the value of a homegrown company? Does it matter? Is there evidence that it delivers economic benefits that are significant or different than other kinds of companies? And the truth is that the evidence is extremely clear that homegrown anchor companies, companies with strong ties to their local communities, companies with senior decision-makers and executives that live as well as work in the local community, are more deeply invested in the local community and make more economic investments in the local community. Vancouver has a vibrant city life, it's why we're all so thrilled to call it home. And it's of huge value to me and of huge value to all knowledge workers. I want to emphasize that arts and culture are key parts of Vancouver that I'm tremendously proud of, and as a former board member of the Museum of Vancouver and a current board member of the VSO, and more notably, the VSO School of Music, that does so much fantastic work throughout the city. I and my community are deeply invested in a vibrant city that is excellent in both sides of the equation, science and technology, and the arts, culture and building sustainable communities. We need all sides of this particular circle. Change is always difficult, but change is constant. I don't envy you your task, you must weigh up costs and benefits. But I want you to know that this application has my wholehearted support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, just checking here, about councillor Hardwick. You have up to five minutes for questions.
Hi Jill.
Hey, Colleen.
What about the location? Do you have anything, I mean, a hundred percent agree with what you said, but what about the location specifically? Do you have anything that you can say there?
I can, I mean, there's lots of wonderful places in Vancouver to build tech businesses or life sciences businesses. But Mount Pleasant is where Abseller is from. It's where their roots are, it's where their employees work today. It's where they started and where they'd like to continue. And I'm not privy to the details of their business reasoning about why it's the perfect place for them, but I do trust them. They've made some very good decisions over the years that have led to some very good outcomes. Technology and life sciences businesses are really people businesses. We've heard a lot about the importance of the lab space, and that's very true. But the humans are the more important asset. And humans need to be provided with a space in which they'll thrive. So I would not, I probably would not second-guess them about their desire to continue their success in the place that they started their success.
Terrific, thank you so much.
Thank you councillor Hardwick. So that's it for questions for you, thank you so much for calling in. And I'm just going to move to the next speaker. We have speaker number four, Andre Marziale.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Sure can, up to five minutes, please.
Great, thank you so much, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for giving me a chance to speak. My name is Andre Marziale, I'm Director of the UBC Engineering Physics Program, and I'm also a biotech entrepreneur. I founded Boreal Genomics, a small biotech company here in Vancouver, about fourteen years ago, along with five of my students at the time. I'm speaking to you from the beautiful Hope, B.C., where I wanted to say a word of thanks to the community. I'm currently trapped in between landslides, and they've given me an internet and a warm place to make this important call. I've been watching Abseller grow from its beginning with enormous pride, and for many reasons, but partly because so many of the key people in that company, including Carl Hansen, are graduates of the program that I've had the pleasure of running for sixteen years. In fact, I think I've taught many of them first-year physics, and Carl himself was a student in my lab. So for me, this is truly a community company. But one that has hit the world stage in a position of absolute leadership. And it's something that we have desperately needed in the biotech sector here in Vancouver. So as an entrepreneur, I can tell you, starting Boreal in two thousand and seven, you know, and in a way, it was kind of a nice thing for us as a company, and we could pick off the absolute top students from anywhere in the Lower Mainland, because they had nowhere else to go. They either worked for us or they went to the States. And that's hopefully not, you know, doing a disservice to the few other small companies that existed at the time, but the opportunities just simply weren't there. And we were lucky to retain some top talent. And I can say, as I, you know, as Boreal went through, you know, some ups and downs over the years, and I was forced to lay some of that talent off, thankfully, by that point Abseller was here and have taken them on. So I know that Abseller has some of the best young biotech people I've ever met, and people that would have certainly gone and taken jobs in the United States had Abseller not started to grow when it did. At the time I started Boreal, if my students who were biotech-oriented were asking me where they should go work, if I hadn't hired them, I would tell them to go to the States. As it stands now, there's enormous work opportunity in biotech in Vancouver because of Abseller, they're by far the largest employer. But what's even more important is their presence alone and their growth is giving the rest of us, including my company, which is now hiring again, the ability to actually bring talent, you know, not just recruit locally, but also bring talent from the United States, because with this critical mass now, you know, high-value, you know, high-quality people from other countries that might be thinking of coming to Vancouver to work in biotech, have the comfort that, hey, if things don't work out at Boreal, there are other people hiring, including this phenomenal company. So the presence of Abseller is not just allowing us to retain people, it's allowing us to attract people. And I think their growth is absolutely key to this. And I've had that experience of trying to find a place to expand a company with wet lab space, as Peter Zanstra was discussing earlier. It is very hard, you can't just move into any office building. We've ended up remaining on the UBC campus, but we have a very small space, nothing that would be even close to what Abseller needs. So I completely understand their need to build. It's very, it's just, this space just doesn't exist in Vancouver, this is not San Diego. So they, yeah, there's no question they have to build these buildings in the location, because as someone was asking earlier, we asked ourselves that question at Boreal many years ago, you know, what if we build somewhere else or move into a building, you know, far from campus? And the fact is, as I'm sure is the case for Abseller, almost everyone at Boreal commutes their bicycle. It's hard to recruit young people these days and expect them to have long car commutes or do things that are not, you know, what we're all striving for, which is to be environmentally friendly. So the Mount Pleasant location, I understand, because it's actually in the nexus, close enough to campus where they will be able to attract young people and have them being willing to work there, and which is not something that will happen if they place it too far away from this area. So, you know, I think I can summarize by saying it's, Abseller is really going to be the key player, in my opinion, that turns Vancouver into one of the major biotech hubs of North America. And it is a wonderful thing to see that it's people that have, you know, are homegrown, they've been trained here, they have the values of our culture. And I think this expansion is going to be absolutely critical to their success and their ability to stay in the province. I wholeheartedly endorse this.
Thank you so much for your comments tonight. I don't see any questions for you, so I will move on to the next speaker. Thank you again for participating. We have Neil Columbus, speaker number five.
Mayor, speaker five is not on the line.
Thanks, clerks, we have speaker number six, Matthew Breach.
Hi there, this is Matt Breach. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for taking the time this evening to discuss this project. I'm here to speak in favor of the project. I think mainly as a business owner in the Mount Pleasant area. I own a company called Tallgrass. We've actually been in Mount Pleasant since nineteen ninety-eight as a manufacturer and distributor of natural health products. And today, we have approximately eighty employees, sixty of whom are based at our facility at Fifth and Yukon. And we love our neighborhood, and we're super excited about this project that Abseller and Dayhu are proposing to you. And we really would like to see more density in our neighborhood for this project, for sure. And just in general, I think that it's getting more and more expensive to access industrial land in Vancouver. The amount of land is very limited, and there's more and more demand for it. So the prices are obviously going up. And so, you know, the only way to really meet that is with supply of more density. And that's just essential to keep growing businesses and attracting knowledge workers, like Abseller is trying to do here. Our neighborhood has changed a lot. In some ways, it's much better, it's very exciting, and all the transit that's going in, you know, along Broadway, just expands, you know, the transit options. But at the same time, the neighborhood has really taken a turn for the worse, certainly since COVID, homelessness, drugs, crime, it's pretty serious. We've had several police calls, nine-one-ones in the last week or two, homeless people threatening our employees, defecating, leaving needles, you know, all the things going on in our neighborhood. A lot of businesses have gone out of business, little cafes and restaurants that I used to like to frequent have become, you know, bankrupt. And there's just not enough people in the neighborhood. We need to get more people on the streets, we need to get more businesses, we need to, you know, and I'm sure the council would appreciate more property taxes as well. That only comes with density. For businesses that are struggling to be competitive, I think having access to a reasonable cost base for your land and your buildings is incredibly important. And so I think for the sake of the neighborhood, this is a, this kind of project is super-high-profile, right? Because Abseller is such a world-class company. So to say no to these guys would be insane. But also, I think just more broadly for the neighborhood, we need a lot more density, and we need it very soon. And we need to get our neighborhood back. So we look forward to the council supporting this proposal, and thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you for your call tonight. I don't see any questions for you, so I'm going to move on to the next speaker. But again, thanks for participating. One second here. All right, the next speaker is speaker number seven, David Mayne.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you much for your time. So my name is David Mayne, I am the President and CEO of Notch Therapeutics, and I fully support the CD1 rezoning application for one fifty West, Fourth Avenue. Just by way of background for council members to bring some context to my comments, you know, I am a graduate of the UBC School of Pharmacy in the late nineteen eighties and the Soder School of Business, and I've dedicated thirty years of my career to building biotech companies in Vancouver. First at QLT, one of the first inaugural companies in Vancouver. I joined there straight out of grad school, and I was recruited to become the CEO of Inex Pharmaceuticals, then started and created a company called Aquinox Pharmaceuticals, and now I'm the CEO of Notch Therapeutics. I know firsthand the challenges that companies face to first find suitable office and lab space, then to attract and retain the best talent. It has been a challenge for each of the companies that I've guided over the last thirty years. And in fact, I have tried a number of times to locate my companies in this exact same neighborhood, and was never able to find a suitable landlord willing to make the investment to support our companies. But it was always a location that we felt that was ideal. You know, biotech is a globally competitive business, and a majority of the capital to grow these companies is provided by US-based investors, and it is an exceptionally high bar to secure these investors. So I support this proposal for a number of key reasons. First, I hope council appreciates how unique it is to have a local-grown company that has demonstrated the ability to lead its field globally, attract the capital. This just doesn't happen every day, although all of us aspire to do so. Secondly, I'm personally impressed by the vision and commitment of the Abseller management team to make this sizable financial commitment to Vancouver. You do not make this magnitude of investment lightly in infrastructure, nor do you view it as a temporary location. This should not be overlooked. Thirdly, we need a dedicated infrastructure to reverse the brain drain. We want our students to stay here, and trust me, they have choices around the globe to go. The bold vision of Abseller will be appealing to them. And lastly, the location is ideal, being near the hospitals, rapid transit and a variety of living opportunities and a vibrant community. Some of the speakers previously talked about the importance of this community. I think that adds to why Abseller is a crown jewel in the center of it, we'll just make it better. You know, the actual proposal here to add floors is also specifically to expand manufacturing space and talent, and this couldn't be a better expertise to grow locally. So overall, this bold vision and investment will make it possible for companies like Notch to convince investors that Vancouver is a place to do business, to attract and retain talent, and to make the city a hub in the biotech industry. So I couldn't support the proposal more. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and I don't see any questions for you, but thank you so much for calling in, and I'm going to move to the next speaker. We have speaker number eight, Lee Mettut.
Yep, good evening, everyone, you're able to hear me?
Sure can, yeah, please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Terrific, well, good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I wanted to talk with you all about being in favor of this project. So I am a business owner of Midland Appliance. We have a number of locations in the Lower Mainland, and we are just under one hundred employees. Our Vancouver-based business is in the Mount Pleasant neighborhood, literally right across the street from this project at Columbia and Fourth. So I know it very well, I look outside the front doors of my business, and I see this project being built every day, so I'm a big supporter of it. I can tell you, as a business owner who's been in this community for almost thirty years and looking to expand, I can tell you how difficult it has been finding appropriate space for me to grow my business within the industrial area, either of Mount Pleasant or throughout Vancouver. And so I think, you know, one way to combat losing businesses from this area is we do need to consider, I think, adding more density to the spaces that we have. I know that's been a real challenge for me, is finding some appropriate space. And so I think it's great that, you know, that Abseller and Dayhu and the team want to look to build on the land that they already have, as opposed to potentially take up other spaces that could be used for other businesses. So there's a number of other speakers who have shared their thoughts on Abseller and the value that a business of that stature brings to the community. I can tell you, I agree with all of that, but my motives here are also somewhat selfish as a business owner in that community. And so I think having increased density on sites that already exist helps other businesses like me be able to continue to operate within that community. So I'm a believer in this project, I think it's great. I know we're only looking to add a couple more stories to what is already there. And so anyway, I just, I want to let everybody know that as a local business owner who's been in that community for, like I said, over thirty years, I'm certainly in favor of this project, and I think it would be great for the neighborhood and for the city overall. So thank you.
Thanks for your statement tonight. I don't see any questions for you, so I will be moving on to the next speaker. We have speaker number nine, Wendy Hurlberg.
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure can, up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Councilors, for the opportunity to speak. I'm joining you from my home within the traditional ancestral and unceded territory of the Swamish Nation, Saltertuas and Musqueam. Again, my name is Wendy Hurlberg, and I'm honored to be here to support the proposal of the rezoning. I'm the President and CEO of Life Sciences B.C. For those of you that may not be aware, Life Sciences B.C. is a member-based not-for-profit, funded entirely through our members, representing B.C.'s vibrant life sciences ecosystem. Uniquely, we bring together academia, research centers of excellence, and the broad-based life sciences sector, digital health, health tech, med tech, biotech, many of the companies that you've heard from today. And I think you've been able to see, at least for the part of this session that I've been listening to, that you can see it's a very close-knit community. And one of the things that brings the life sciences sector's strength in Vancouver is how well academia, research and industry collaborate. Something that I think is one of the key reasons why this location is really important, because it's nicely connected, as has been brought up, but close to academic institutions, close to hospitals, close to research centers and close to industry. Life sciences is a very strong sector in British Columbia. We are actually home to the fastest-growing life sciences sector in Canada and one of the fastest-growing for our province. We've raised record amounts of capital over the last two years, and our revenue has been growing substantially. Life Sciences employs- Life sciences employs almost twenty thousand, uh, people across the province, of which the majority of them would be in the lower mainland and Vancouver. And we have the fastest-growing area of related fields in academia. All of these ultimately creating high-paying jobs as people graduate. What's critically important though, with all this success, is that people have places to go to work. And, um, life sciences, I often say, is a double-heeled benefit, no pun intended, in investing in this sector because not only are we creating jobs, but we're also developing innovative products, solutions and services that are critical to addressing the challenges that we face within our healthcare system. And I think many speakers tonight have already spoken about that. While our performance has been impressive, Vancouver, as you've heard, has a very unique opportunity with Abseller's proposal. We have close collaboration between academia, research institutions and industry. It is truly what makes Vancouver strong. We've had an extraordinary impact on addressing the challenges related to COVID nineteen, as you've heard already this evening, and we'll continue to play an important role in addressing the challenges that the pandemic has faced, that we've been faced with the pandemic and the unique challenges moving forward within our healthcare system. Vancouver, you may, uh, or may not be aware, has recently also been recognized as one of the top life sciences startup ecosystems in the world. We were ranked twenty-one out of two hundred and eighty regions that were looked at globally by Startup Genome. We are the only Canadian city to be in the top twenty-five. So why is that? It's with companies like Notch that you just heard of and many of the others that you've heard of that have addressed, have, many spun out of our academic institutions and have started companies and tried to scale. With this though, we've had a lot of challenges, as you've heard as well, about the critical shortage of commercial lab space. And this building in particular is focused on addressing that. And with the lab space, we will continue to have scientific innovation and discovery and continue to build our skilled talent base, which ultimately creates jobs, which, um, ultimately end up creating a more vibrant economy. Approving this application will ensure that our grads will have places to work and also have places to go as they continue to move to other organizations within our vibrant, um, biotech sector. So we're very fortunate and I'm very grateful to have Abseller choosing Vancouver as their home. Not only will they be, continue to be a very strong, uh, force within the biotech sector, both nationally and globally, but there will be many residual benefits beyond job creation and company creation and most importantly, through contributing to a vibrant neighborhood through engagement in the community arts and culture. For this reason, I am fully supportive of this application.
Thank you so much for calling in tonight. I don't see, uh, any questions for you, but thanks for participating and I will go to the next speaker. Counselor, at nine fifteen, we have Andrew Dunn, speaker number ten.
Hello, me again. In my excitement to speak to the, the last point on the agenda, I actually forgot to acknowledge that I'm coming to you from the unsurrendered lands of the Musqueam, Squamish and Slavutu peoples here in Mount Pleasant. Um, secondly, congratulations to Abseller. Um, I sincerely wish you every success in the, in the neighborhood. We certainly wouldn't want to see, um, anything other than the complete success for the company. And I, I expect that this point will also be approved. It would be rather bizarre if hundred and ten was approved and hundred and fifty was not approved by a council. But the same questions that I had on a hundred and fifty still apply, plus a few others. So I haven't, I still haven't really heard why the alternative locations weren't considered, uh, in particular the flats. And the second speaker to this item said that she was happy to trust the business judgment of Abseller, which is great as, as far as it goes. And, and I mean, they've demonstrated that they have fantastic business judgment, looking at the growth of the company. But I don't think that's how elected councils should be making decisions. I think you should have something more to go on than just the trust of a business decision. So, so there's that point. Um, I also have some concerns about the consultation process and the planning process in general for this particular development. Now, the initial website that invited comments and concerns, the deadline for comments was posted on the cards that were received, which was for the twenty-seventh of June. The same deadline didn't appear on the website. So people were coming to the website unaware that the deadline had closed and they weren't able to make comments. And the deadline wasn't extended despite that error. I'm actually looking at the building now. There's a beautiful illuminated blue crane out of my front window here. I'm looking at the, at the building and the beginnings of a floor that they started to build out with the current zoning entitlement. And when residents noticed that this was happening, that they were overbuilding, the developer was actually overbuilding and, and going beyond what the zoning permits, we contacted, uh, Nick Danford and the team. And that was on the second of September, sent an email describing the overbuilding that was happening and, and asking what would be the response to that. And, and I'm not sure what the response is supposed to be. So that, that was just an inquiry to the council and we were assured that everything was fine. Now, if you were to go down to the site now, you would see that there's actually a stop-work order that was posted in late September because they did indeed exceed the allowed building limits for the, for the existing zoning. Not sure how a developer manages to do that, whether it's carelessness or ineptitude or, or just perhaps deliberately overbuilding i- in anticipation of, of gaining approval. And I, I, I just wonder if council would, would maybe speak to that and then maybe ask the, the planning department why that overbuilding was allowed to happen and what would normally happen in cases where a building exceeded the, the current zoning limit before the new zoning limit had been approved. Um, not really much else to say other than, um, I, I sincerely hope that they, that the, uh, development is successful and it, and it has the impacts that a lot of the other speakers believe that it will. For the speaker who was, um, the local businessman, it, it, it's great to hear from local business people in support of the development and it, and it's definitely reassuring that there are people in the, in the area who support that and, and who are themselves business owners. When you were talking about the, the increase in homelessness and the increase in, in poverty-related crime, you, you might describe it, that's not going to be resolved by high-density constructions like this. It's just going to be transferred elsewhere. So I, I think it's important to note that, that, that this isn't going to resolve those issues. This is just going to move those issues to a different neighborhood within the city. And then, I also made a point in my initial remarks on a hundred and ten about the, the thermal island that we experience here. And this is, this particular neighborhood, if you look at the map that was produced in the Thai article that I referenced by Christopher Chong back in June, and he talks about shade inequality in the city. We're a bright red thermal island and there's a, a distinct lack of, a- apart from the park, there's a distinct lack of, of planting along the, the east-west streets, sixth and fifth and, and the street where the development's going in. And it was interesting to hear the, the architects speaking about the, the, the nice urban oasis that's going to be provided, but he, he specifically said that it's going to be provided for employees. So once again, it, it's, it looks as if it's a development that's going to privatize access to necessary public space. Um, the rest of us who live here are going to be left with pretty stark concrete streets that are uninhabitable during heat domes. So I would ask that, that council consider doing something about that. If, if there was anything that, that could come out of this that would perhaps rejuvenate or help develop some of the, the greening of the, of the neighborhood, that would be a, a much appreciated side effect of development. So again, my, my main concerns are gentrification and, and I'm in agreement with councillor Swanson. I really hope that what comes back to you in May, that it, in some way ameliorates the effects of urbanization. I don't believe that urbanization, that, that, sorry, uh, gentrification. I, I don't believe that gentrification has the trickle-down effect that a lot of the other speakers seem to believe. And I think that's pretty much borne out by the evidence of where you see it happen elsewhere in the city and elsewhere in the world. But maybe this will be different. Maybe this time, bringing in high-value jobs won't suddenly make house prices more expensive and won't suddenly raise the business taxes and, and raise the rents for, for small businesses. Who knows? Hopefully that's the case, but I, I would ask the council to consider, to, to strongly consider supporting existing businesses as they approve this. And once again, thank you for your time and thank you for the opportunity to speak to this.
Thank you for your time. Uh, I don't see any questions for you, so I will move on to the next speaker. Also, the next speaker is Larry Sim, speaker number eleven.
Mayor, speaker eleven is not on the line.
Thank you, clerks. Uh, speaker number twelve is Naomi Linklater.
Speaker twelve should be on the line.
Great. Naomi Linklater, uh, speaker number twelve.
Did your phone die?
Pardon me?
Hang on.
Uh, we, we called Alan Dunn, or sorry, Andrew Dunn. Have I got speaker number twelve, Naomi Linklater on the line? Okay. Uh, speaker number thirteen is withdrawn. Speaker number fourteen is Karma Sabar.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, I can. I'm sorry if I've mispronounced your name. Uh, you have up to five minutes, uh, whenever you're ready to go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. Good evening. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak today. Um, my name is Kareema S. Sabar. I am the CEO and management partner for Quark Venture LP. We're a venture investment firm, uh, global firm headquartered in Vancouver, but investing internationally in the US, Canada, Europe and Israel. And the fact that we chose Vancouver to headquarter ourselves is a validation of the quality of innovation and science that comes out of this city. Um, much has been said, um, I'll, I'll introduce myself a little bit more just for context, but much has been said already by many of the speakers and so I'm not going to say a lot of the things I was going to and rather focus on three or four key points. Firstly, um, my background is I'm a neurochemist by training, but I've been in business leadership roles, uh, for the past thirty years, um, in, in the life sciences. I've worked all over the world. I came to Canada in nineteen eighty-eight to work at what used to be Connaught Laboratories in Toronto, now Sanofi Pasteur, and, um, left when I was heading their international division worldwide, responsible for sixty countries. I then moved to Vancouver some twenty years ago, particularly because of its incredible innovation and biotechnology sector. At that time, companies like QLT and Angio Tech and others that were here. And I have kind of worked the entire ecosystem, came to head a company, take it public and international, um, uh, then was a CEO and president of Life Sciences BC for some years, and then heading, uh, an organization called the Center for Drug Research and Development out of UBC where I was president and CEO for many years. And I tell you this because I have gone through many, many companies, many, many technologies and CEOs and seen the effect of not being able to anchor these companies and grow them in Vancouver. We almost become an off-balance sheet time for technologies and companies to go to other jurisdictions and realize the economic benefits there. And similarly, we've become an off-balance sheet pipeline for nurturing and producing some of the best talent that leaves our city and our province and goes and works not only in other parts of Canada, but frankly, all over the world. And I can tell you that, uh, my son who would have graduated, uh, uh, last year, had he, um, been here today with us, um, all of his friends, when I look at them, eight out of ten of the kids who graduated have all left Vancouver and have gone to other areas. And why? Because there aren't the kind of anchor companies like Abseller that sit here to enable them, uh, to, to live in Vancouver. If you don't have anchor companies, you don't have anchor jobs, you don't have anchor talent, you can't anchor capital and all these things are, are a snowball. So let me tell you, um, about the benefits of, of a company like, uh, uh, Abseller being here and why it is so important to approve this project, which I support, um, very much. One of the biggest challenges for companies not staying and growing here, we're extremely good at, at the development of, of, of the innovation, of spinning out companies, of growing them to a certain stage, but we can't anchor them, is because we don't have enough laboratory facilities in Vancouver. We don't have enough infrastructure, uh, to keep these companies here and, and they very quickly move. And also investors who come, global investors like ourselves, even ones who are not based in Vancouver, uh, in fact, we try and attract many investors to co-invest with us so that large types of investments happen in our companies, in, in, in those of the Canadian companies we invest in. They also want to move these companies away because they see that there isn't adequate infrastructure, there are too many barriers to keeping these companies here and to keeping, uh, you know, the talent and the jobs here. So I would really, uh, appeal to you to think about this and I would appeal to our city to think about this more broadly because truly Vancouver can be a leading hub, not only nationally, but one of the leading hubs in the world in life sciences and the biosciences. And I recently had the opportunity to chair the Health and Bioscience Economic Strategy Table for the federal government. We've taken a deep dive into all of the different sectors and what are going to be some of the sectors that are going to be pivotal in the future economy of our country and, and of course, of our province and our city. And one of those is very much the biosciences sector. It's one of the three legs with, you know, the greening and the green economy and the digitization. Life sciences and health tech is, is extremely important. And it's extremely important for quality of life for Canadians. It's extremely important for the economic well-being, uh, of Canada, of BC and of Vancouver. And Vancouver is the leading hub, as Wendy spoke earlier. Uh, it, it is the leading hub in Canada. It's in the top twenty-five in the world. At one time, it was ranked the seventh most prolific and active, uh, life sciences, uh, sector, uh, in, in the world. And so we need to really leverage our strengths and build on them, create high-paying jobs. And I, I, I listened to many of the previous speakers and somebody raised their concern about having, you know, uh, not diversification in the job. Because of the kind of jobs that are created in life science companies, we are going to have the opportunity of having many more of the spillover jobs and the multiplier effect of that. And frankly, that needs to be looked at very closely because the impact is huge in many of the cities around the world where life sciences has become core to their economy, such as San Diego, now even in, in countries like Australia, in cities like Sydney and Melbourne, in the Scandinavian countries like Copenhagen.
Thank you so much, speaker. Uh, you are over time, but I just want to say thank you so much for your call.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Uh, council, we have, uh, I think one more listed speaker, uh, speaker number fifteen. Just, uh, I don't know if that's, uh, Simon Pr- uh, Pimstone.
Hello?
Hi there.
Can you hear me? Hi.
Sure can, up to five minutes, please, whenever you're ready.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor, council members. Um, it's a pleasure to be able to talk in support of the zoning application. Uh, just as a brief background, uh, I'm a member of the Division of Internal Medicines and Cardiology at UBC, um, a biotech entrepreneur. I've founded about half a dozen companies in the province, both private and public. Uh, until recently was CEO of Xenon Pharmaceuticals, now the executive chair. We're about a two billion dollar market cap company trading on the NASDAQ. We employ about two hundred people here in Vancouver. Um, I was really, uh, excited to get the opportunity to actually call in and provide support because, uh, a lot of the work I've done on the not-for-profit side over the years has been with non-government and governmental organizations looking to drive science and technology and innovation in this province. We've been talking for decades about how we move from a resource-based economy into a digital and knowledge-based economy, provincially and nationally. provincially and nationally, and the biotech sector here, I think, is an incredible example of that opportunity. Uh, we have one of the fastest growing sectors in North America. We employ collectively thousands of people. They're the highest paid employees in this province. Uh, we employ people out of our tertiary institutions, government-funded institutions, whereas you've heard from other speakers, uh, if we didn't employ them, many would leave. These are taxpayers. Uh, we bring hundreds of millions of dollars a year into the province for these high paying jobs, for taxpayers to spend money in the province. And so this is a sector that I think can really transform the economy of this province, uh, unlike any other. Absellerah is a leader in the sector. Uh, what they're looking to do is really build what is a world-class facility that will be a magnet for hiring, a magnet for innovation, and a magnet for investment in the province. Uh, I've seen what companies like Absellerah can do. My company has had the privilege of employing hundreds of scientists out of our institutions, uh, putting their children through school, through university, and providing incredible opportunities. Uh, on top of that, the type of work that Absellerah does, uh, is all in the public good, developing drugs for conditions like COVID and many other, uh, very serious medical conditions from which all of us will benefit. So I'm incredibly supportive of Absellerah as a, a bellwether company. We need these types of companies in our province. They're transformative and they're transformative potentially of our economy. One of the questions was raised earlier about why Mount Pleasant. There is no better location, uh, I believe, to build this type of economy. We're sitting perfectly in Mount Pleasant between the new St. Paul's Hospital development, the BC Cancer Agency, Vancouver General Hospital. Uh, it is a remarkable, in fact, corridor for what I think could be a world-leading biotechnology hub and a world-leading innovation hub. But I'm hoping and predict that Absellerah is the initial leader in transforming a community into a knowledge-based engine located perfectly in this province and in a way that I think can be truly transformative to this economy and move us away from the old resource-based economy into something very new, very modern, and, and really, really put this, the, the city of Vancouver and the province of British Columbia on the map. So that's really what I had to say, strongly supportive and, uh, happy to take questions.
Thank you for your, uh, time. I'm just looking, I don't see any questions for you, so just thank you for coming in. Uh, council, that is the last speaker, uh, registered speaker, so I'm going to call the first time now for, uh, additional speakers. Clerks, is there anybody on the line or in the chambers?
There is one speaker on the line, speaker, uh, twelve, mayor.
Okay, uh, speaker twelve, please, uh, go ahead.
Hi, it's Naomi Linklater.
Oh, hi there.
And I just wanted to comment again on this project. So a- again, I, I, I think it's very strange that we keep couching that somehow if Absellerah doesn't build at that one particular area, that one particular spot, that they can't do all the wonderful, amazing transcendal, you know, life-saving work that they do. But the thing is, the Mount Pleasant protected industrial area is currently a hub of diverse activity. The artists who work here are working in this area because it's, because it is the last remaining light industrial area in Vancouver, where production, repair and manufacturing can take place. So one thing that, um, I can't remember his name right now, um, it's late, but the, the person who's promoting this project, he has not actually answered the question. So I'll just have to assume that, um, building a lab site, because it doesn't exist here now. Building, purpose-built lab site in the area can be built anywhere. It doesn't have to be built here. I don't think, because no one has said otherwise, that labs have to be built in certain specific zoning areas. But this project does not suit the area. That, there's a zoning restriction in this area that this building doesn't fit. And the reason why there's a zoning thing like that was to protect all the small businesses so that their taxes would not skyrocket and speculation wouldn't come in and drive them out of the community, which happens again and again and again. And so it was to protect the small businesses in the area. So Absellerah does not suit the area that it wants to build in. And it was also really weird that the idea that their values are good values. Their architect was basically bragging about this private park that they're going to have inside for their workers, for those exalted minds who are going to work in that building. And again, this area is basically a heat bubble. And the park where we have, it's old, it's tired, it's overused. And that building, which again, the architect was bragging about all the wonderful views that the people working on it would have, is basically going to obstruct the views of anybody who is going to be sitting in the park. So this whole idea of privatizing everything wonderful and beautiful about the city, because Absellerah wants to build a campus somewhere where the zoning doesn't allow. I, I just, I, I don't understand it. And I can't remember the council name, Dejanova. She keeps talking about daycare. She mentioned it three different times. Absellerah does not have a daycare there. They're planning on using daycares in the community. They're not bringing daycares to the community. But this whole idea, this, this way that the, you know, it's going to bring in jobs, that high-tech jobs are better. Well, my son went to, is a graduate here as well. He graduated from Emily Carr and he works in the digital imaging business. And he has an excellent job, which allows him to buy a home and live in Vancouver and to pay his taxes. So he's not better than someone in biotech. He's just as good. But he should also be allowed to live in a community. He should be allowed to be part of a community. And he should be, you know, I mean, it's just frustrating that somehow these exalted minds of these young people who are going to come and build, it's, it's just so elitist and so classist. And this high idea that people who are mechanics and clothing manufacturers and bakers and all those things, somehow that that's not a good thing. That's not a healthy thing. That's not a wonderful thing to have in a community. And this is the only place they can do it. Whereas I truly believe, unless someone tells me otherwise, and no one has answered the question, that Absellerah could build a lab elsewhere. And also the same councillor, Dejanova, who, whatever her name is, that she says that they could move on the flats. The artists who are living here, working here and thriving here, who have good businesses there, they can move to the flats. Well, there's no space on the flats because the studios and everything are located here. But this building hasn't been built yet. Well, it kind of has because they kind of overbuilt while they're waiting to be approved.
Thanks, you, you're right. You're five minutes, but you do have, uh, questions from councillor Dejanova. Go ahead, councillor Dejanova.
Just on a point of privilege, um, mayor, there was a statement made saying that I said something that I didn't say. And I just wanted to correct that for the record. Um, I just, and I do have a question as well, if that's okay.
Go ahead, councillor Dejanova, answer your question.
I, because it's a quasi-judicial body, Mayor Stewart, I did want it corrected that I was asking about Absellerah or other biotech opportunities on the flats, not suggesting artists all move to the flats from.
So, yeah, so this is a question to the speaker.
Thank you for letting, so will that be corrected on the record? Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
It's not really a, a point of privilege.
You allowed it and words were put in my mouth, so thank you. Um, and, and for the speaker, thank you very much. And, and yes, I, I have mentioned, uh, uh, childcare. It's top of mind for me. Um, in fact, I'd like to see twenty-four hour extended, um, hour childcare. I'm, I'm wondering though, in, in talking about protected space for artists, and I understand this and, and know a lot about it. I've built housing in Mount Pleasant for artists before. It's one of the things that inspired me to run for council, um, and disabled artists also. I'm just wondering, where would you see Absellerah going or, or do you feel that there's another use that's inclusive in your community?
You have all the people. You have all the people and you have all the departments. And yet somehow Absellerah wants this space and everyone's just rolling over with their legs spread, thinking that this is okay. And I just don't get it.
Sorry?
Point of, point of order.
Yeah, I think that's it, speaker. Thank you so much for your time this evening. We're just going to cut it there.
Thanks, mayor. I'll end my questions there. Thank you.
Hey, council, after that delightful exchange, um, I'm going to make a second call for, um, speakers. Uh, clerks, anybody else on the line?
No speakers on the line or in chamber, mayor.
That's the second call. Uh, so we're going to go to a third call, council, at nine forty. We'll come back at nine forty-five, uh, to hopefully complete the item number two. Thanks. We'll see you in five minutes.
Hi, mayor. There's no speakers.
Hey, thank you so much, uh, for that. So, uh, council, with, uh, no speakers on the line, we're going to close the, uh, list as we've had, um, few or no comments, uh, from the public since, uh, five PM. We're going to, um, close the receipt of public comments. I'm just going to ask now if the applicant has any closing comments.
Thank you, mayor and council. No further comments.
Thanks very much. Staff have any closing comments? Staff, any closing comments?
Uh, thanks, Mayor Stewart. No further comments from staff.
Thanks so much. I'll just check with council. Any questions for staff? Council? Please put yourself on the list. I don't see anybody on the queue, so could I have somebody move the motion, please?
Move.
Councillor Carr.
Councillor Boyle.
Uh, moved by councillor Carr, seconded by councillor Boyle. I'm just on the main queue now. Anybody wish to speak to this item? I don't see anybody on the queue, so I can call a vote. Councillor Fry, councillor Dejanova. Councillor Dejanova.
My apologies. My video is not wrong. I was trying to talk.
That's okay. No problem.
Or I'm trying to get my thing all going.
Oh, you guys give me a.
Oh, yes, in favor, please. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. So clerks, could you, uh, mark councillor Dejanova in favor, please?
Well, we'll correct that on the record. We ended the vote too early.
Okay. Thanks so much then. Uh, that is unanimous. So council, thank you so much. Uh, got to say at, uh, ten minutes to ten, I don't think it's worth starting, uh, the next, um, item. So council, um, I'm going to ask clerk, uh, when would be, uh, resuming this meeting? You can remind us when our, when we'll start with item three.
November twenty-third, six PM.
Okay, great. So.
Process.
Thank you very much, councillor. Second by councillor, I think, or domino. All in favor? Yay.
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 Opposed? Nay. Thanks very much, council. We'll, uh, see you tomorrow morning.
Bye.
Bye bye. Thanks, clerks.
All right, everybody. Thanks, staff.